I do.
So the minutes are kind of like in May seventeen, June seventeen? Ready? Hi, good evening, welcome. I guess I'll hit that now. Good evening, welcome to the City of Huber Heights, uh, city council work session July fifth, two thousand sixteen at six oh three P M. Numbers present, uh?
Mrs. Lang. Mrs. Lang and Chip's on vacation and she indicated that for last meeting, so she won't be here this year.
And do we know of Mr. Lyons?
Uh, he has not conveyed anything to me. I know he was in DC on vacation yesterday, but I don't know if he made it back yet.
Okay, alright, uh, and we'll go ahead and get started with the numbers that we have, which is fine and makes the quorum. And, uh, we have approval minutes, the June seventh, uh, two thousand sixteen minutes have been, uh, distributed and, uh, uh, will stand as read if that's, uh, the council's wish. Council's wish, stand as read, uh, moving on to topics of discussion, uh, first item on there is pickleball courts.
Alright, I'll, uh, kind of introduce it. We've got a, um, update on the pickleball project for the, uh, discovery of pickleball courts. Uh, we've been doing a little bit of, uh, research, I'll let Brett, um, I'll let, uh, Mike kind of review the bid respondents, which there weren't any, um, and his efforts to go out and find a, uh, vendor that would be willing to do it, um, for, uh, uh, for our project and I'll, I'll let him review the, the cost, which is, uh, significantly more than what we originally anticipated. But nonetheless, I'll, uh, I'll let Mike provide those details.
Thanks, Rob. Um, yes, as Rob said, uh, for the first RFP that went out, um, I believe in April, I can't really remember the exactly date at this time, but, um, there was no response to that bid request. Um, that being said, we solicited bids, um, at this time, there's only one person who has presented a proposal. That proposal, such as Rob said, is significant higher than we had anticipated. Um, the proposal alone, just for the pickleball courts, is roughly fifty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars. Um, to include the fencing of fourteen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, um, the legislation that you see in front of you is for an ask of seventy-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, uh, and that's due to a fifty-five hundred dollar contingency, in case anything was to happen or anything. Um, happy to answer any questions about the process.
Uh, Mr. Schelmer?
Uh, yeah, briefly, uh, we just wanted to make sure that there was some discussion, uh, because of the, um, uh, certainly the unanticipated increase in the cost, uh, and, uh, some of the, um, previously and most currently discussed priorities, et cetera, regarding parks and rec and regarding, uh, the funding of that. So, um, that was gonna be my only comment.
Mr. Rudge?
Uh, Mike, did other communities that, that have built these courts have a greater response to their RFPs than we did?
I'm not sure of that. I contacted other communities and, and people that have, um, who I had one built in Eaton, I believe it is, Eaton.
Uh-huh.
Um, I contacted that particular vendor that put that one up for them and I haven't heard back from them.
I, I know that a lot of people are interested in this, but I guess, do you feel, I don't know if I, you're the right person to ask, if it's, if it's still a cost-effective thing to do, that because of the large increase in price?
That was part of the discussion that I was hoping to get some clarity on. This is a nearly double what we originally anticipated. Uh, we have discussed some priorities. There certainly is a, uh, desire, uh, to have pickleball as, um, as, as defined by our Parks and Rec Board. Um, and the, uh, investment into the facility versus the amount of use for an outdoor pickleball facility. I do know as of, as early as this morning, discussing it with, uh, um, Tiffany Fox, their gym time is being, uh, heavily reserved for pickleball use and they're wanting more time, but they just don't have time to offer it. Uh, the disadvantage for outdoor, obviously, is the seasonal, uh, you know, restrictions, uh, for, uh, for being outdoor. And once it's not being used for pickleball, I guess the question would be, could it be used for anything else? Um, and is it that specific? So those are some of the questions to make the determination. I think that there is a, a user group here, certainly in Huber Heights. Uh, pickleball and lacrosse are rated as the two quickest growing recreational activities and sports, um, based on some studies and some recent articles. Uh, however, I also know that this council has certainly expressed, uh, some interest in making sure that we have adequate funds to increase some of our, uh, other facilities and expand some use for some other facilities as well. So, um, as far as the right person to ask, I think it is a priority-setting question, um, and, um, you know.
I guess, I guess the only other question I have is, what do you think the likelihood is that, that it will exceed, that it, that it will exceed this amount that we have in front of us now?
Well, the legislation of the seventy-eight thousand, three hundred, I don't, I don't believe it could exceed that, but I don't know what type of unforeseen circumstances you may, or we may or may not run into.
I mean, okay, that's, that sort of answered my question, that they've answered all of your concerns, um, that, and contingencies or whatever, the known contingencies.
Mm-hmm, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Shaw.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, real quick, can you go over those numbers one more time?
Um, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars. That's for the refurbishment and basically they come in and do a crack seal and paint, netting, that type of thing. Um, to include the fencing, it'd be another additional fourteen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, a contingency of fifty-five hundred dollars, um, with the rounded up total of seventy-eight thousand, three hundred dollars.
And just to clarify, the fourteen, four ninety was, uh, for the fencing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, have, have we, and I, I guess it's more of a question maybe for, for Jim, uh, or maybe even yourself, um, have we looked and seen if there's any grant opportunities within, uh, NVRPC, um, or, you know, the state, um, that is looking, uh, in into, you know, as you said, one of the fastest-growing, I'm sorry, Rob said, one of the fastest-growing recreational activities in the state, uh, so to kind of be that catalyst, uh, catalyst and then kind of take that on, do we know if there's any outstanding grants right now that's available we can apply for?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
The, um, kind of follow-up on that and the answer, the grants that we've researched regarding acquisition of, uh, of parkland and improvement to existing facilities, uh, through ODNR, um, they are, um, assigned through the state by county and for all countywide projects, uh, the overall funding amount for what's allocated for twenty sixteen is under the amount for this project.
And just kind of my last question here, um, are we possibly looking at the opportunity for naming rights for this pickleball court, um, such as we did for the aquatic center and the music center? Um, if a business was interested in naming rights, would that be something that we would be interested in and could we move forward on that? Okay, thank you.
I, I guess this is, I, I have an issue with the process that we have here. Uh, for two, two and a half years, I was listening to the Parks and Recreation numbers and hearing that, uh, the pickleballs could be done for thirty-five thousand dollars, thereabouts. But not seeing, not seeing any thing to back up that number or such. And then sending the Parks and Recreation Committee people to go out and, and look for donations and, and different ways to fund it and such. And then, uh, we come and we put together a request for proposal with fifty thousand dollar number on it and nothing in any of the reader heads I have show where that number comes from or how we came to, uh, to, uh, that particular number. And now I see that we have a seventy-eight thousand dollar number, twenty-eight thousand above what our last estimate was and I had nothing here to prepare for, to look for costs or anything, or to compare it against the previous numbers that, uh, that we had come, uh, to expect. So, you know, I've always been a proponent from first time I heard Mr. Black bring this up in the, uh, Parks and Recreation Committee, that, uh, we needed to do something with those things and pickleball was a good, good choice. Right now, we have tennis courts out there that are basically useless and no plan to get them back in service. Uh, and for two years, I've been listening to thirty-five thousand, we were prepared to go to fifty thousand and obviously there was nothing supporting, uh, uh, any of those numbers and such. So, uh, I'm concerned, 'cause I'm not in favor of a seventy-eight thousand dollar project right now, uh, in here. I want pickleballs, but I want to know why I was thinking thirty-five thousand would get me there. And now today, I'm looking at seventy-eight thousand dollars and looking at seventy-eight thousand dollars without knowing, oh, without a cost breakdown in front of me to look at, to see, so that I can go out and approach other vendors or, uh, other things that, that we may not have, uh, anticipated or been able to identify here. So, I, I'm quite concerned about the process, uh, as we go in the cost of escal- escalation, uh, in just the summer. So, we need a, we need a process or we need to figure out what we're gonna do with those courts and how to get them back where they're useful, uh, to people. But I'm not really sure about seventy-eight thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, we agree. We certainly didn't escalate it, if that's, um, um, what might be implied. We did not have any other, uh, significant bids. Uh, we certainly made estimates based on, uh, some general cost of maybe general asphalting. But obviously, if we went and researched it, we found out that there were some more specifications and some more use to make sure, um, uh, that the type of surfacing and the, and, and the fencing, all that stuff was down to spec, uh, rather than just re-asphalting some existing courts and putting up a net, et cetera. We didn't want to do it that way. We want to make sure to do it right, uh, because as, as we indicated, it's a, it's a growing sport. We wanted to keep it to the specifications. So, uh, as far as any escalation, that would be from a relatively uneducated estimate to where we just start a discussion, uh, back to you start the process of trying to define and get, uh, realistic, uh, responses from a, from a proposal or a bid. Uh, we got none and, uh, so we had nothing to compare to at that time. And now the only thing we've got to compare to is actually reaching out, soliciting a, a respondent who did not respond, but we got them to agree to submit a quote to do the job, uh, that's where we got that number. So, um, as far as the escalation, uh, it certainly is, is, uh, by virtue an unintentional thing, but based on a lack of qualified respondents, uh, in the first place and, um, and being able to utilize the bidding process to really define the scope and what the true breakdown of the cost would be for the needs within, uh, the development of the project.
Mr. Rondo.
Mike or Rob, do we, have we, uh, spoken with other municipalities that have these courts to see what their costs were on similar type courts? And, and is this number close to those?
I have not. I've, I've gotten quotes from them just of what proposals they've received in the past.
Okay.
And the original numbers that was set, was set up with two is numbers from a particular, um, vendor. Um, like when the, the pickleball discussion first came into play two or three years ago, um, they asked me to pursue costs at that time and those were the costs at that time. Two or three years later, in a bigger bid spec sheet, a higher specification put upon, that is the increase that you see.
This bidder came from?
This one's out of Columbus.
And they do a variety of sports facility type of things?
Yeah, they've done, um, ATP Pro Tennis Complex at Kings Island, um, Ohio State University, Ohio University, Denison Canyon, Oberlin College, Upper Arlington. I mean, I can, I can forward you all the emails if you, you know, if you want to read it.
I'm inclined to send it back to Alex and the Parks and Recreation and, and tell them that our budget is fifty thousand dollars and try to find some way to get their courts in that budget. I don't know what the rest of the council's thinking. Counsel? Tom? Mr. Campbell?
Uh, Rob, do we have any partners in the community that we've worked with, contractors, that we might be able to call and, uh, have them come out and sit down with staff and come up with some quotes? Could we attempt that?
Yeah, we've got a, a variety. You, you start looking at things and breaking down the project as individual projects, such as fencing, such as asphalt, such as general, uh, site work, et cetera. So, uh, we, we could look at it at that, uh, fashion. Um, I, I know Russ has some contacts, um, I know Mike does, uh, even I see him in the room, Mr. Conaway certainly has some contacts as well. So, yeah, we could certainly approach it that way.
I'd like to see us move forward as quickly as we can, not at this number, but, uh, maybe validate that number with some additional information, some additional, uh, quotes and, and so on, if we possibly could, in an effort to get back with us with more information that we can make a decision on, just in an effort to get the pickleball project moving forward.
And, and discuss the fencing, discuss four courts instead of six courts, wha- whatever.
Just every option.
Yes, correct. We don't need seventy-eight thousand dollar, a hundred thousand dollar, whatever it turns out to be, kind of a project. Mr. Rondo?
I was just gonna say that I generally would, would agree with, you know, along the lines of both you guys, saying that, uh, I would certainly like to see these courts happen. Um, I think at seventy-eight thousand, it's a bit of a sticker shot for me too, when I opened this and looked at it, um, 'cause I'm along, I'm in the, in the car with Tom, where I'd heard thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollar numbers through an early process and then, you know, we, we approved fifty, you know, assuming we may run into something different and then this is quite a bit bigger number than that even. And, um, you know, I, I think we need to do a little bit more research into it. I'd love to see it happen, but not at this, this cost.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know which of you raised your hand, first one, Mrs. Smith and then Mr. Styler.
Thank you. Um, before we tackle something like this, maybe instead of looking at grant funding just for the state, why don't we look at the private sector? Because for example, Southwest Airlines has a hundred thousand dollar grant that's due January first and if you get it awarded, then they match it with a hundred thousand dollars. So it's green space, grant funding. So it'd be a total of two hundred thousand dollars if you get awarded for it. So, there's a lot of grant opportunities out there, other than just through the state, um, or government itself. And maybe we should kind of look into some of those as well. That would just be my suggestion.
Mr. Styler.
Since we're taking a, a relook at this, um, I decided to quickly look for pickleball and, and Googled it and the first thing that came up was Dayton Pickleball and what's caught my attention, just in terms of possibly looking outside the, um, the box as we're going back, is it looks like for Dayton Pickleball's, um, website, the first image on the about us has what looks like a Y or some sort of gymnasium. But what caught my attention is the fact that they have, um, portable, uh, non-permanent, uh, nets for this and it appears that they're using it in, um, a basketball court. And so possibly to work around the, the expense if we're gonna look into this, is this something where is the basketball courts that are there at, um, any of our parks in particular, Cloud is one and, and Community, where maybe if we have the paint scheme down, um, and perhaps get some of the temporary, uh, nets instead of the permanent nets, then we can have a multi-use, uh, facility that'll cost us probably much, much, much less than the quote here. So, I'm not saying that I'm sure of that, but since we're looking back, I'd like to at least have us take a look into that as well. And if, if I'm off for some reason, you know, just let us know that, but.
Okay, so I think that we need to send it back to, to Alex and Parks and Recreation and, and suggestions like that, uh, certainly might help them, uh, come to us with, uh, something that we're comfortable funding. Alright, uh, Mr. Burns.
When the pickleball thing first came out, Mr. Black came to the...
Can you speak loud enough so that you can catch me?
Shoot. We, when the original pickleball thing came to the back room, and I'm not sure if it was the admin committee or which committee it was, but that night, I slipped Mr. Black my business card. You know, the Chamber of Commerce, we're here to support the senior citizens, the city and everybody else. Sometimes it seems like we're forgotten as part of the community. So I took that opportunity, uh, with Mr. Black and I met with Walmart. Walmart was all over it. Certainly, we'd love to help out. What kind of money are you talking? I didn't have the numbers at the time. As long as they can have their logo all over the pickleball court. So I didn't stop there. Also, I went to Myers and went to a home improvement store that's located here, which they're all Chamber members. Lowe's, uh, has said to me on many occasions, uh, well, you know what, uh, we've reached out, uh, to redo the, uh, uh, the canal locks, but nobody from the city ever contacted us. So, I, I don't want to come up here and sound like I'm complaining, but you know what, you've got resources out there. All you have to do is, is ask. So, now that's been probably maybe a year, two years ago. Some of those managers are currently not in place at Walmart, but you're along the right lines. If, if we can get some contractors, there are some Chamber members that do contracting work, so you know what, use us. Uh, and I've spoke with Mr. Black and he backed off from the Chamber. He said, "Well, I think the city is gonna take care of it." So, that's why I think that he didn't pursue it. But anyway, I'm offering that, you know what, we're here, just let us know and we'll do what we can. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burns. Obviously, we'll want to hear more about, uh, the locks proposal and, uh, and the pickleball. So, if we can make sure that, uh, that your council members know who to contact or who the city staff should contact and, and we'll make sure that, uh, those conversations happen, or at least we'll inquire to make sure those con- conversations happen. Alright, so, uh, I could send that back to, uh, Mr. Black and the Parks and Recreation and hopefully Mr. Black has, uh, uh, the information that Mr. Burns has spoken about and, and we can, and we can move forward. I don't know that the city has ever given the impression that, that we were willing to fund a unlimited project. I, um, I'm certain we had that thirty-five thousand dollar figure in mind. So, if, uh, if we can get, uh, uh, community support, uh, and, uh, business support for, for that, I'm sure we, we would welcome it. And all things, as a matter of fact. Alright, we'll move on to the next, uh, agenda item, supplemental appropriations. I'll go ahead and take that one.
I put in your packet, uh, several changes to the current budget and I'll go through those first and then I have, uh, two others that have come up since I put this in the packet. Uh, total of one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, uh, we need to finance the, um, the eighteenth deck draw. And that total, uh, with special assessments, uh, comes to one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So, not only do we have to budget that, uh, to spend in Carriage Trails Fund, but we also need to have a way to fund it. We don't have, uh, financing in place yet as far as, uh, doing like maybe a short-term note again, or maybe, um, a rolling note, like we've done with some of the others. So, uh, Donnie and I got together and we're proposing for right now, uh, to do a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar advance from gas tax, uh, for the street portion of these, uh, parts of the Eighteenth Amendment, five hundred thousand dollars from the water fund and five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars from the sewer fund. So, those advances would temporarily fund the draws from the Eighteenth Amendment until we can get some permanent financing in place. Uh, next, uh, five hundred dollars for the Arts and Beautification Committee. This is to match donations that have been received for movie nights, uh, so whenever donations come in, I, uh, have been asked to increase the budget for the, uh, committee's work and so we do that. Uh, next item is twenty-one thousand, three dollars and forty-nine cents and this is a, a combination of several different funds. Uh, that being, uh, as I came to you earlier this year, uh, from time to time, uh, some of the, uh, smaller, um, if you want to call them boutique funds that don't get a lot of use, uh, as they get deposits in, uh, we need to, um, budget for all possible expenses that could take place in those funds. And what I'm talking about is like the drug enforcement fund, the law enforcement fund. These are, uh, funds that, um, when you have, uh, like say a drug bust, you'd get money, uh, come in as a deposit, anything, uh, if it was seized, we get to keep that, um, so we'd want to spend that money later and we don't know maybe at the time what to budget on, but when an, an expense comes up, instead of, uh, taking it to council and taking, you know, two to four weeks to, um, add that to the budget, it's readily there and available to them to spend. So we've got, uh, six hundred and twenty dollars for the, uh, drug fund, uh, nineteen hundred and three dollars for the law enforcement fund. Um, actually have a decrease in the two forty-two fund, which is law enforcement assistance fund. Um, and then we got a large payment for a DEA case, uh, which was eighteen thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and seventeen cents. And so that needs to be budgeted in the federal equity sharing fund. Uh, and then two other, uh, amounts, the fire inch, I'm sorry, the, uh, unclaimed money fund. Uh, we have a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, uh, to budget in there. And then also forty-one thousand in the cash surety fund, which I tend to, uh, we get those in quite often from engineering. So, that's the latest that's come in on those. Uh, in addition to that, we've got seven thousand dollars for the aquatic center and, uh, we started a program this year with Groupon and so what happened was, uh, the Groupon, uh, company gave us seven thousand dollars and so we need to get that back over to the Y. It's, uh, they collect all the revenues, they do all the expenses during the season. So, since it came into the city, we don't normally collect any of the past money or daily, uh, entry money to the aquatic center, so we need to create that as an expense, so that's an in and out of seven thousand dollars. Um, we received a bill of about a thousand dollars, uh, dating back to two thousand and fourteen for the digital sign. Uh, this was one where Scott received the invoice for it. It was sent back to the company and said, "This is not legible, we can't read a couple of the amounts." And it took them almost two years to get that invoice back to us and we had since closed the PO, so we need to rebudget that money. It was originally budgeted and we are still under the total amount budgeted for the cost of that sign. So we're, so there's no issue with that. We don't have to have, uh, legislation for that. And, um, seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for, uh, fire prevention. This is related to, um, uh, Officer Baumley, who's been taking over some of the jobs of fire prevention officer. I know we haven't replaced, um, was it, um, Mr. Eckert, Rob? Is that who was doing fire prevention? So, he's been doing some of this and so we need to budget that. It wasn't budgeted at the beginning of the year. And I think that covers everything that was in the packet and then since then, I've come up with two more. Uh, another donation to the Arts and Beautification Committee of three hundred dollars. So I would ask that that five hundred dollar amount that I currently read be increased to eight hundred. And then also, as we went through the audit this year, the auditors have recommended that we, um, take on a different process of, um, purchasing capital items. Uh, currently, the department heads tend to budget for the net amount, so in other words, if there is- there is a trade-in. And so you might have some police cars that you're purchasing, and you're trading in maybe two or three old ones, and that comes to maybe a $10,000 discount off of your new purchase. We've been recording that at the net, and the auditors have suggested that we put that down as a total expense, so budget the complete expense and then take off the $10,000 donation, because it's important when it comes to the time where we flip it over for the CAFER and we do accrual-based accounting, that's where you need to report the entire asset, and if you just report the net, you're not reporting the true cost of that asset. So if the asset, if the car, for instance, was $25,000, and you've turned in one for $10,000, you know, you need to report it at 25, not 15. So they're saying that we need to, we should, some trade-ins that have happened just recently in the Police, Fire Fund, I'm sorry, $14,000, and then in the 214 State Highway Fund, a total of $13,202. So I would ask that those be added to what was in your packets, and then you'll see these in your packet before Monday night for approval. Are there any questions about any of this that I've discussed with you tonight? And because of the nature of some of these, I would request that they be passed on Monday night. Counsel. All right, we'll see you that time Monday night, then. Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right, moving on to Rose Music Center, financials.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Schellmer, take the lead, even though I requested it.
Yes. Yeah, as you would see, that was passed out and also posted, the more detailed cash basis management report, and I think that you'll find everything on there. It pretty much allocates every single expense and provides a summary, and all the feedback that we received and questions that were asked regarding the annual report, we're going to drill down, as I said, into month reports. So the May Monthly, as you see, has quite a bit more detail than even the last year's annual, and we're going to continue with that detail to show any drilled-down information perspective that we have. Some of the additional information that was requested and asked in there, as far as projections and future stuff, we have an additional 21 shows for the remainder of the year. There's a total of 33. As of today, there were a total of, forgive me, I've got multiple emails open here, a little over 67,000 tickets sold. As far as a prediction factor, that really means nothing, it's just a number, because, and if you compare to some information from last year, you know, we had a few fewer shows than last year than what we did this year. However, ticket sales are maybe proportionate a little bit more than this year, but that really doesn't indicate anything. There's quite a bit of the season left, several shows still on sale, so that proportion amount of sales can be very different month to month. We've sold a lot of tickets because we've had a lot of shows on sale, and, you know, that may taper off, it may swell, who knows? There's a whole variety of factors regarding that. Regarding sellouts, there's been a total of three, and that's Vince Gill, Boston, and recent DIA. I know that was a question that was asked. As far as maintenance issues, we did do some capital improvement this year regarding, there was some sod down, if you've been to the facility, on the far corners of where the seating area ends and the quote "pit" starts, and there's some removable railing. Well, the sod in that area is subject to a whole lot of washing when they spray down the seats and wash and clean out, and the sod just didn't take. So we've replaced that with concrete. Also replaced some drainage areas for moving lifts and forklifts, et cetera, across the front part of the stage that was already going to start to damage some of the plastic drains in there, so we've upgraded that and made some concrete and some changes at that. As far as complaints, comments, concerns, not good. Honestly, we have not had any concerns or issues or citizens call up. I think some of the concerns with some of the music that can be heard is maybe more at an acceptable level this year, and the time change, I think, did, as we suspected might have a significant impact where the shows don't go as long. We have honestly, to date, not received any feedback regarding that from some residents that even contacted us last year. Regarding compliments, there's been, you know, some variety of compliments, and, you know, that comes in via, a lot of times, it's messaging through social media. Mimi passes a lot of that stuff on and monitors that stuff. We've received some informal stuff as far as general comments. And regarding the rest of the transactions, the financial report, I think, speaks for itself, and again, it is just through May. We'll have April, I'm sorry, June out, hopefully in a little bit quicker time. It took me some time to work with them to format what the detail that we wanted, but I think we've got a good template, and, you know, as they wrap up and close out the month of June, that will come to us here relatively quick. Another question that came up was the comment of deferred revenue and what that is. It's a significant amount. Essentially, and I'll use the example of a Merle Haggard concert, it would not be proper accrual basis accounting for Mimi or us to count the revenue for that show because there will be expenses attached to that show, and for that particular show, obviously, it had to be canceled. So we would not want to bank in and show credit for expenses versus income that hasn't yet been closed out or guaranteed. So basically, that's why it showed as deferred. Once the show is closed out, then that's counted as actual revenue, and we will count that in and reflect and report on that on a month-to-month basis, but we do have that deferred revenue that's out there. In other words, ticket sales for those remaining 21 shows is the deferred ticket revenue that's out there as of yet. And I think those were the points brought up.
Thank you. For those looking at the profit-loss in the read-ahead, it actually is not the same document that's posted under the Rose Music Center.
Correct. There's an additional document with the detail, and if you recall, an email that I sent you, I was awaiting some detailed reports yet back to fabricate this particular report, and that was put out and posted on the website after the deadline for the read-ahead, per your request.
The one that was on, the May one was after the read-ahead.
Yes, yes. The actual May P and L from Mimi that we post on a regular basis has always been up there, and that's the one that's in the read-ahead. But this report was posted publicly on the website. Unfortunately, I think it was on Thursday last week, which was after the deadline for this meeting's packet, so I just didn't quite have it finalized and verified through, so...
All right, good. So for council members and for the public, I find the one that's on the website on the Rose Music Center to be, well, obviously, it's not more completed. It has all the breakdowns in there. It's not the two-page up there. And then what caught my attention was that the deferred revenue at the top, which you mentioned, which isn't noted in the read-ahead one, is in the front, so my apologies, I was just trying to figure out what the difference between the two was when I pulled it up. The base numbers are the same, so great. Counsel? Did you, did you get a chance to look at the one with all the numbers on the deck? Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you and Rob for working together. Sitting on council, a lot of times, we might not have the information prior to the committee meeting as thorough as we see here tonight, so thank you so much. I know you worked hard on that.
Thank you. And I know you had some questions previously when we've talked about the advertising and the, I want to call them warrants, but not warrants, affidavits.
Affidavids.
And that, did you want to talk about those?
You've included the advertising and such in this number.
Every transaction.
And I think by year's end, we need to have verification that all the monies that were spent through advertising were spent for us, and there was no co-mingling of the money.
And are you familiar with the affidavit process and such?
Yes. Yes, and that's something that we also, through the independent audit, have checked, and there were very, very few, but there were a few expenses that were, you know, quite frankly, combined in and that our auditors did check and have been rebalanced out from last year. So we do verify and check them on a regular basis.
Okay, so we have been getting affidavits for the advertising costs?
No, we don't actually receive the affidavit. That's something that we would look at to verify the summarized costs, so we will do that certainly later in the year.
So we're going to request that?
By the end of the year, we would have reviewed those.
Yes.
And Tom, if you remember, we had talked for the diocese about Donnie spending a couple days a week down there, and we all agreed that that might be time and money well spent. Is that paying off, Donnie?
And we'll go more in-depth into it now that there's more records, since we've got a few shows under our belts, but those are the primary issues. We discussed the audits and some of the things and some of the procedural changes that we'd like to see, and they were 100% in terms of implementing any of those changes, so I don't think there's going to be any issues, and we'll make sure that there... I think there was $1,200 worth of expenses last year that were identified that were kind of co-mingled, and they've made that restitution, that accounting entry where they put the money, moved it back from Mimi back to us, but, and those were just procedural things that we just need to pay attention to. Learning issues on their part to make sure that the people who are doing the work actually were, you know, were doing what they should be doing, so we should be fine with going down there on a regular basis.
And then the relationship, you know, all trust.
Yes, yes.
Do I understand that we sold 67,000 tickets to the... That estimate isn't, I'm sold 12,000 all of last year?
Just over 61,000.
So no matter how many concerts we've scheduled for this year versus last year, that's more tickets, so hopefully that results in more revenue. Do we have a number through the end of May that we've grossed or net in regards to profit after the reconciliation?
Yes, actually, what we've done, and again, this is just based on how we were kind of directed to do it, took all expenses, and we've included additional expenses such as the other city and capital expenses, for instance, insurance, the actual breakdown of police overtime. There's an actual spreadsheet chart in there for per show. Also, the SIB loans, financing costs, et cetera, that are in that. And if you take, and again, this is just through the month of May, if you take the total operating income plus the total other income, which that's the naming sponsorship, and you subtract both the operational and then our other facility expenses, that leaves net income, which is income less expense, very basic breakdown of $307,198. And again, that's just through May, and I can guarantee you that's going to be different at the end of June.
Yes, and that does bring up one of the other things that I had caught my attention was that there is the SIB loan expense in there. Could you explain again what the SIB loans cover?
I'll let Finance explain that.
But it's not the total cost for the 19 million? Okay.
It covers some of the parking.
Okay. All right, so that's good to know, that at least part of the construction costs are being covered with the operating expenses.
It's not actually paying them with operating expenses, but they're...
Okay.
In terms of putting them in the total, they would be covered.
Okay, yes, okay, you're right. Yes, 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 I understand.
But to the mayor's point, the cost of those SIB loans are taken off of our...
Yes.
And that's how we'll look at it throughout the year. A couple of other things of note that we found out in taking and identifying this as kind of a separate budget within a budget, and because it, you know, us always looking at it as pretty much a business within the city, something such as liability insurance, I just mentioned it, we found out that we estimated the percentage that we thought that the cost of the insurance, liability, marine facilities, all that stuff for the Music Center itself, we were high on that estimate. When we actually break it down through the actual bill, what the cost is for covering the alcohol sales, covering the interest, we're about $10,000 high on our... So we'll refine and adjust all that as we get those particular bills in through the year. So it's, we're to that, we're drilling down to that level on this report, just to give an indication.
Yes, and obviously, it's pleasant to see a $307,000 net income, because all the things that I had questioned about being in the report last year seem to be in this report, and it's quite... Obviously, a shock that we could be that far ahead. Do we anticipate that we will get away from being ahead as we go further in the season? Oh, okay. All right.[1547.42][1547.42](laughing). Like a major expense that comes due once a year at the end of the season or something that would just eat all that up is basically what I'm asking.
We don't foresee anything. You know, a lot of those capital expenses, as we said, that were going to be, you know, one-time initial, first-time capital expenses, you know, should carry us for a while. You know, we don't have to buy cash registers, we don't have to buy furniture, you know, all that stuff, so it's already done.
And some of the expenses last year are now being done on a monthly basis instead of an expense at the end of the year, like we saw at the end of last year, so that's much better. And actually, getting back to the audit portion of it, in talking to the folks from Mimi and the Finance Department there, they said, based on the fact of how diligent the auditor, the person that was auditing their books, based on how diligent she was, they have now changed some of their practices to be more diligent on their end in making sure they have receipts for absolutely everything that they're doing. The auditor had found some receipts missing, and so they are covering what they need to do much better, similar to your gold standard Finance Department here at the city. Sure. And actually, that kind of leads into another topic of discussion that Mr. Campbell and I had previously, was like for alcohol sales and merchandise sales and such, what kind of checks and balances are in place to show that we don't have a lot of free drinks being given out by the vendors or anything like that that could happen that would...
Yeah, you want to talk about the way that's basically inventoried, the way that is budgeted, is cashed into inventory, and then it's expensed out once inventory is used, so Jim can speak to that.
And we'll let Mr. Campbell actually ask, get in a lucid manner.
In regards to the co-mingling of the product, how are we auditing that the beer we're buying isn't being sold to PNC or vice versa? Do we have going forward checks and balances with you going down, Donnie, once a week?
In fact, they even inventoried their ketchup packets last year. They allocated those things to each show, so there is a, you know, those things balance out through the year, and you'll see the inventory come in, and you'll see the inventory go out, and everything that goes through the cash register on a per-unit basis is run up, so there's, you'll see it, you know, the balance.
Really reviews, like maybe counting the cups versus the amount of beer sales?
Well, you take the amount of beer sales, and you can, you don't necessarily have to count the cups, but you can, you should have X amount of sales, and then you should have that X amount of usage, and you'll see that usage as consistent with, you know, the sales being correct.
We have a pretty good idea what profit we make off of beer.
Yeah.
And then what they're reporting to keep.
If you sell 100 beers, you should go through, you know, one keg or whatever the ratio is, and if we're buying 60 kegs and we know something's wrong, if we're buying one, then that should be just perfect, and that's kind of how it's...
And Tom, and my conversation included that, how do we know that we're selling the amount of product that we're buying? You guys are checking that?
Okay. And we're also watching the staff, at least, I should say, they are watching the staff, the concession manager. We review when the payroll records come in...
We review when the payroll records come in, we review what tips are getting reported. And if you've got regular-sized tips on several employees and one employee's turning in, say, $2 worth of tips, then they know somebody's doing some cheating there. So, that has been kept up on, and it's a very obvious flag when it happens. And so, they're dealing with that individual there when that comes out, if it comes up.
And this is all internal to, between us and our management company and such? Okay, and are you satisfied that we're good going forward?
Yes, I was very impressed with what you provided us of read ahead. There were areas in the report that we could drill down and start to get even a more comprehensive look at the numbers. And I believe a few folks can ensure us in ways like Donnie going down and meeting face-to-face and that the product that we're buying matches up with the product that they say they're selling on our behalf. Those are the areas that we're concerned about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Otto.
I was gonna ask on ticket sales to Tom's earlier question. The only kinda surprise I made is to come in, say, I went in and I bought, for this report, I bought a ticket to, I'm just picking a concert, to Joe Walsh concert, I bought that in May. The concert's not till July. Would my ticket purchase be reflected on this report? Or will that not be until that concert's reconciled?
No, it's not until that concert is closed and reconciled, that's why it's reflected as deferred revenue. So, the only revenue actually showed are for shows that were closed out and held within that month. And that's the only revenue that's shown. The rest of it is deferred until the time that which that show's held.
Excellent, thank you.
See, if you look at the one online, let me plus that up there. The first thing he put up there is deferred revenue, and he says there's $2 million in deferred revenue. Okay, that's not counted in the rest of this, that's the, yes.
That's a really strong number.
Alright, but it doesn't have deferred costs in there either, though. The cost per the show, we haven't paid Joe Walsh yet, alright, so, so it's not-
No, but I should say, there are some costs that are reflected, like advertising, for instance. You're advertising now for like Joe Walsh and some other concerts that are happening yet this month. And so, those are reflected as they're spent.
Right, right, so, yes, so it's, looks pretty encouraging so far here at the end of May. Yeah, alright. Um, sorry, Ms. Burge, go ahead.
How are the resale of tickets reflected in here? Because if someone buys a ticket and then they change their mind and they put them up for resale, somebody's getting a profit off that resale, they're not being sold, resold at the same price they were bought at the same time.
We get the revenue from the original purchaser of the ticket if it's resold, that's not our revenue. For instance, there's-
We don't do resales at the Huber Center, these are all through Ticketmaster or whatever, the resales.
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, or we would refund, if we refunded it, then it would, just shows refund. There's actual refunds listed in there.
Right.
So, and that happens, Merle Haggard, for example, there were several refunds. And then there are some other occasions and reasons and excuses. But, yeah, if there's a refund and a repurchase, that would be shown. But if somebody were to buy a bank of tickets and then sell them on their particular service or site, we reflect the revenue for the original purchase, the secondary sale, we really have no control of.
Thank you.
And Ms. Smith.
Okay, I have a barrage of questions, so if you could bear with me, please. One of the questions that I have is, Huber Heights police expense carried in the police budget, is this recognized, is this recognized in the Rose operating expense?
Yes.
Is it also reflecting on, out of the police budget or is it out of the Rose budget?
It's reflecting in the expense of the Rose budget. Obviously, it's initially paid by our, you know, our overtime budget, you know, from the police division, but it is shown as an expense charged off.
Yeah, I can comment on that, Janelle. I, this year, we're now submitting those expenses for the overtime by concert to Mimi, and they are reimbursing us. So, when that reimbursement comes in, that is, that takes down the overtime expense in the police department budget. So, basically, it's replenishing the overtime spent in our payroll by what they're reimbursing us for.
And the detail of that, if you look under other city facility expenses, police division site security overtime, there's a spreadsheet, hyperlinked to it, that shows the actual breakdown for the each transaction.
Thank you. The other question I have as far as property insurance, I do see the liability insurance. Is there an admin insurance expense item? There was $513, I'm not quite sure what that was.
That would be a cost for the Mimi employees that is charged off as the operation for basically theft coverage. They are required to cover and carry there, however, the operation of the employees that we contract there. The liability insurance is full liability, both building, both alcohol sales, equipment, all that. So, that's separate expense. The other expense is an expense generated through the operation, which is reflected in Mimi, which is charged as an expense for the operation, and the other one is an expense that the city has. That's why it's noted as other city-related expense.
Okay, the other question I also have is, is there somewhere here that I'm missing the landscaping expense? Do we know how much it is?
Nope, it's in there. If you look under other professional services, if you click on that link, it shows a detail of the expenses shown out and the landscaping expenses included in that, as well as rental fees, et cetera, for other things. It is in there.
Other professional services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the other question I have is, the profit split according to Mimi contract is not shown. Is that because we are not in a full, we haven't completed a full year?
Right, we haven't reconciled the year yet, this is just a monthly interim report.
Do we have a number that's estimated based on the financial results to date?
I'm sorry, what number are you talking about?
For the Mimi contract, the splits, is there something that we have projected that shows with the split? What we are looking at as far as a projection, do we have a projected profit for that?
No, because we, yeah, we don't have that. We could calculate it, it's a formula built in the agreement. First $150,000 is ours, then it's a 60-40 split. I'm sorry, 70-30 split, no, 60-40, yeah. $150,000 is ours, and then there's a 60-40 split. After, of everything that we define and show as an expense, and expense is a defined term.
Okay, the next question I have is, how much of the music center's debt and interest payments are being paid by TIF funds? How much is being paid out of the general fund?
Right now, all of it, and the only actual debt service is the SIB loans that we discussed a moment ago. We have not incurred long debt service on this yet, and that will be, yeah, further on.
And as far as this $750,000 seed money, how much remains? Do we have a payback plan or has it been paid back, and if so, when?
We cover that in detail on the report from last budget year. We didn't report on that on a monthly basis, but we can give a fund report on that. We can do that next time around.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Now- At this early in the game, there's likely not much of all. In some of our reconciliation, we talked about, well, for instance, property taxes. I noticed a line item last week in the property tax area that we discussed. We may move out of that because it's for the property taxes for the lot that the new hotel and the remaining land, but that's not really applicable to the music center and/or Parks and Rec expense. So, we're going to go through and make some adjustments to that, and that is still counted in that Parks and Rec fund where, in essence, that $750,000, it's not a large expense, but still, $7,000 is $7,000, and we want to account for it correctly, so, yeah, we'll-
And then, as far as the expenses, is there somewhere that we can find out how much we're paying our bands?
That's not reflected in a show-by-show or band-by-band, that's a individual contract, individual contract, which is nondisclosable information. As a council, we can discuss that, but publicly released information, we reject that.
Okay, and I can appreciate that. That is something that I would like a better understanding of, how much we're paying our bands and how the bands are being picked, the band selection, if I could, at a later date. The other question that I have is, on page nine of the report, the catering expenses for the month of May were $21,809,000. What does this include?
There's a variety of catering that goes on for, basically, from early in the morning until late at night. Catering is provided for the stagehands, the crew, the show, catering for the artist, et cetera. So, that is essentially what that, what that covers and expenses out. That's not the catering for what you might think the VIP area, that's not that, that's event catering.
So, we're paying 20, almost $22,000 to cater basically the bands and the roadies and things like that, is that what we're saying?
And the crew and the stagehands, yeah, that is an expense that's factored in and counted as part of the, part of the cost of the show.
So, do they give you a list, when you book your bands, do they give you a list of the demands that they want, the perks? You know, I want my temperature of my room to be, you know, 68.5 degrees, or I want red M&Ms. I mean, do they give you a list of things that they want that go along with the fee that they incur?
That's something that would be best answered, you know, directly and probably with a member of Mimi staff who deals with those contracts. We don't, as a city, directly relate with that. So, we do handle and monitor the expenses as far as any non-cost expense. You know, that would certainly be something that would be negotiated and considered for accommodation.
Okay, the total advertising cost from January until May is $174,905.44. What concerns me greatly is the website social media ad is $23,000. Could somebody maybe explain this stat to me?
I'd have to look at which one you're talking about.
Well, I didn't add up each individual Facebook that we were charged for because there were so many line items, but I'm just curious why we're paying so much for, you know, Facebook, for an example. Is that just to push out your ads or?
I don't know where you're getting that number from, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, on the second page, it has advertising expenses, so that's what she's referring to. And the web social media advertising does show is $23,000, yes, overall, overall.
So, is that gonna be for the whole year or is that just for the months of January through May?
That's just January through May, but you gotta understand, there's been a whole lot of, you know, initial release and push-out of the entire year's show schedule. So, this is where, an example to Mr. Otto's point, although we've not credited some of the income for the ticket sales, but we've had had some expenses already for some of the shows that we haven't had yet. For instance, this week's shows, we've already paid and held and costed out the advertising for that show, and likely, we've done that, you know, in previous months. So, a lot of that would be included.
By any chance, have we done any kind of surveys to figure out where our advertising? I know, I can see where our advertising dollars are being spent, but what is getting, what Richard likes to say, the best thing for our bucks? So, are we tracking where people are getting their information from? Whether it be from the TV or the radio or the website? Are we kinda tracking what that is best for us and our advertising dollars versus just putting a barrage of money out there across the board?
Well, we're not putting a barrage of money out there blindly and just hoping that where it falls, it does good. Certainly, the professionals at Mimi that we've contracted and hired with their decades of experience knows what the market is best suited for and where the areas and places to properly advertise. For instance, a certain genre of music, you would advertise on that particular genre of radio station. You know, up to and including targeted marketing through social media, which, you know, that obviously is a large opportunity in all aspects of social media, web design development. You'll see in there also, so in answer to that, yes, absolutely, they do. They're paid professionals, the marketing directors and the media directors that work directly in and for not only our facility, but we've got tapped into the knowledge of the market into Cincinnati as well. So, there are great advantages there, and they certainly do do a lot of that work and have that knowledge. But also, you see in there that there's constant modifications, you know, maybe for a few of them there, for May, when sold-outs were announced, and they had to update a lot of the marketing for that to realize and let everybody know that a particular show was sold out. So, you know, that's an ongoing thing, and they certainly do apply what is, what is current, what is modern, and what is most useful. They also judge it on if, you know, based on how ticket sales are going, they would certainly go out and forecast and see if additional marketing would need to go for a particular show. And they did that all through last year, we saw evidence of that. And again, being early in this year, certainly we'll see evidence of that through this year as well. So, short answer, yes, they've got a lot of expertise to do that, and they certainly apply that.
And I don't have a problem advertising and spending money because that's really where you get a lot of your customers is through your advertising. But I have a serious heartburn with $23,000 being spent on social media ads. I just, I can't justify that when usually social media is kinda free for the most part.
Well, it's not free to have the advertisements on the side there, but if you click it, it takes you to the website.
And also, a large part of that is advertising on things like Pandora, iHeart, et cetera. So, that's all web and all social media, it's not just Facebook. So, please don't fixate on Facebook when the word web and social media is used.
Oh, no, I saw the breakdown of Pandora versus social media. And what concerns me is the amount of Facebook charges that we have. If you add all those up, that's quite a bit of money. And I understand, so if we could, I just have one more question, and then we can move on. Can somebody explain why we have overnight security that we're paying for?
Yes, there's a lot of equipment and a very technical facility that we wanna make sure and ensure that is guarded and protected 24 hours a day. It's a great investment of the community, so a small cost of having eyes on and personnel on staff is well worth that investment.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, and I will say that knowing how Facebook works and it clicks through and the fact that if you search Google for Rose Music Center, at Joe Walsh, to see that the next time you look at Facebook, they throw an advertisement up there for the Joe Walsh concert, and people click through there, there's a cost associated with that. And I believe that most people think that's an effective way to advertise now. So, Ms. Smith's concerns are noted, but we just make sure that, and we should make sure that we're getting quality advertising for that. But at least you have an idea with the social media where you really have no idea how many people for radio advertising will come ahead and say, "Well, I heard that advertisement, let me go over and buy a ticket," as opposed to the reassurance that you have when you have a, use a service like Facebook. So, I have Mr. Campbell, then Mr. Starling.
Yeah, I wanted to revisit the split with Mimi, Rob. It's a 60-40 after the first $150,000 of the profit. Isn't there something excluded out of that? The naming rights or some sponsorship that we get to keep?
Yes, naming rights is excluded out.
So, we keep, okay, so there's a portion we get to keep, like the naming rights, then profit over that of $150,000, we split 60-40. And we get 60, they get 40?
Ms. Starling.
I just am curious, in hearing the numbers, if anything is going on with regard to either local festivals or other tech- local festivals or other ticketed events. I know that this was discussed some when we had Mimi in, and at that point, of course, we were just coming into the season. But I recall from the CSL report that was provided to us back in '13, that one of the other items for consideration was the local festivals or other events, regional concerts. And the reason I bring this up is, I appreciate that we want to be operating in black versus red, absolutely, if possible. But I also recognize that in the end, the Rose is a community asset, not just a concert venue, and some folks, in terms of residents, have asked me on occasion if we had plans for that going forward, to be able to have the Rose usable for those that don't necessarily pay for ticketed concerts, but might be interested in festivals and all of that. Can you briefly speak to that?
Sure, it's got a few layers. There were, there have been a couple of organizations that are interested in putting on festivals and, or I should say, some sort of event. Obviously, that's the promoter world, and they are certainly there to create an event and generate profit for themselves, and, well, their events, and that occurs. So that's one level of thing. The other level of thing would be community-type festivals and events. It's about having somebody put something together and their desire to have it. When we talk to our arts and beautification folks, they're strapped as it is now, you know, and it's about the availability of having, you know, that civic type of group and forum to be able to engage and put a new type of festival together. So I think as time and years go on. Secondary events that aren't necessarily shows, I know that they are looking at a couple right now, they've been approached by a group that wants to hold a, not a concert, but a gathering per se, and needed, need a venue for that seat, and they are working out the abilities to do that as well. And that's where they have relied on us to say, "Okay, hey, if this is a benefit of the community, then it would not be at a cost." Obviously, if there's personnel or something, much like we do for a parade or anything else, you know, we make sure those costs are covered, or a run, or whatever it might be that we would do. So that's basically where that is, there's the couple that wanted to hold a event, like a promoted event, they never followed through, and want to put something together, but it takes some time for somebody to gather to put a promoted show together. And there are groups out there that want to do that. And I think that as we examine and look at the opportunities with the Dayton, is it called the Trade Center, or the one at the airport, with that being closed, questionable hair, you know, and some of the limits, although we're not indoor, I think that there's probably some opportunities for some additional things outside and beyond traditional concert, whether that's this year, you know, I know of a couple of things that they want to do above and beyond. A couple of ideas that we also had is having some sort of community rally or event around some sort of sport event and recasting or projecting that particular thing and being able to do that. And they're currently looking into the rules and the licensing through NCAA, et cetera, which would be a good fall event, once shows are done, and, you know, great use for the facility before it has to be winterized. So certainly look into the possibilities of that and hoping that, you know, we can, you know, accomplish that as well. So, yes, absolutely. And on the tales of that, one final thing regarding my report for the Music Center is, we are going to hold this year two more Huber Arts Appreciation Days, where a residence can go to the box office, and I think it's going to be this Saturday, well, this is just finalized today, because we had to finalize it with the artists, and the press releases will go out, to be able to receive two free tickets to one or both shows. The shows will be Chris Isaac or Wynona, which are the two that are following up in this following month. So we wanted to do it in the month of July, subsequent to and following up, the Star Spangled Heights. Some of the delays in getting the finalization was authorization with the artists and et cetera. But just got that in today, and I just got the email about 10 minutes before the meeting and asked if I could go ahead and pre-announce that. So they're working on press releases and we're getting that out. So that will also afford, you know, the community an opportunity to come and visit the facility that they graciously supported.
Just following on that, if residents contact us and have interest in all of that, in terms of putting them in the right contact, is it directly to Mimi or to you, or what would you suggest if someone contacts me to?
Send them my way, that's the easiest way, and I can get direct contact with Mimi, they're very quick and responsive, and, you know, if it comes from us and we can push it and say something we want to do, then they're going to do it for us.
Saying it tongue-in-cheek, it's a little too ambitious to say that we would have viewing nights to be able to watch the Olympics and Rio and have a big screen or anything like that, a little too ambitious. It would be great to have it open for that when it's not in a concert.
Yeah, that would be great.
Right.
Just following up with that, it's not necessarily rights, just to give you an indication, the type of equipment that would be needed, depending on the time of day. If it's nighttime, it's a total different issue, because then you can use projection. If it's something during the day, like a college football game, then you need to go to LED boards, and it's, in order to get it big enough, plus the two on the side, it's $10,000 to $15,000 for an expense. So you've got to start with covering the expense to hold the event. So that always is pretty much the obstacle to a lot of things. A lot of great ideas, but, yeah, projection is completely different, a lot cheaper, but then you can't have sunlight for that. So, yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Smith. Thank you, and I'm hoping to wrap up the conversation soon, but on that same note, though, I don't believe that there's anything in our contract with Mimi that if we wanted to have a community event and we knew that it was going to cost more than it, cost more than we would bring in, that that would be factored into the profit split at the end.
So... Yes, I think I know what you're saying, and yes, I agree. If we decided to hold an event, and if that event cost us money rather than made us money, so be it. That's part of the agreement and part of their duties to facilitate.
Correct, but it would have a direct effect on your management company's profit split too. So I would think that a good management company would have, would be leery of getting into that arrangement if they weren't able to subtract that cost and let the city take it all up.
And I will say that we've had similar discussions, especially at the onset and beginning and development of this, and essentially, they are certainly here and may give advice and may say, "Hey, we're not sure this is the best idea." However, they have agreed that there are some things and times that maybe the numbers doesn't add up, but it is the best thing to do. For instance, the open house, you know, that was an expense, but something that was beneficial, and that was their idea, and that was them putting it together, knowing and recognizing that there are some things that you need to do to make sure to promote the facility and allow the community to enjoy it. So the world that they operate in, being a subsidiary of the Symphony Orchestra and being nonprofit, that's one of the advantages, that they understand that, that it is not always about, certainly they want to generate profit, they want to be, you know, in the black, to your point, but they also understand that there's a great community element to it as well, and they're very committed to that and open.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on to the next agenda item then. Which we see as Ohio Public Works Commission funding for Fishburg Road realignment.
Yes, that is the Fishburg Road realignment. Russ has the details on that, so I'll turn it over.
Yes, what this is, is typical yearly applications in August, since due August 17th. It is for what used to be called Issue Two Funding, now it's basically just called Ohio Public Works Commission Funding. We would like to submit an application for Fishburg Road realignment. This is the project that I brought to you, I think, last year. It is already designed. It is from Aaron Lane going west to Endicott. It is taking out a hump in the road and a dip in the road and kind of realigning it. We were going to build it this year, but we had, the final cost came in about $350,000, and the original estimates was about $250,000. So, and then we held off also because Chambersburg Road was closed for a while, and I didn't want to have both at the same time. So in the meantime, since we'd like to push it to next year, we decided to try to get some funding. Like I said, these applications are due in August. We will typically fund, usually get about 60% of the project's cost if it receives the funding. I think that's about it. I would like this to be second, third being waived if we could, because there's not enough time to get it in by that deadline.
Also, okay, I guess I had issues with the read-ahead on this here. I recognized it as being in the same area as a project that we had put off, but I didn't know for sure from the read-ahead that this was the exact same project, what the costs were. Also, in here, I can tell from the legislation that there's a cost split associated with it, but I have no idea what that is from the legislation. Obviously, 1%, I can do now of that, 332. So I'll just say that I could have come in here with a lot more preparation, with not too much, I think that I could have deciphered this with just a couple of things in the read-ahead that would have made it a lot more clear to me what I was walking into tonight, like that. So, and of course, it's designed now, so that design isn't expected to change.
Right, the design is complete, and it's, yeah, not expected to change.
So this organization doesn't require bike paths when they give you money? All right, okay. So we expect that it'll come in bid around that $330,000, and with any luck, they'll pay 60% of it, we'll pay 40% of it.
Yeah, it's whatever we put in the application as our percent, which typically is about 40% as our share.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Mr. Scholmer.
Yeah, regarding your comment on the read-ahead, by all means, please, as you read it for any future work sessions, if you've got an idea of some additional information, even though if it doesn't make it in the packet, please reach out to us, you know, at that time, and maybe we can at least have something emailed out or posted or brought in preparation for the meeting that might help the discussion at that time. So, you know, please, the channels communication is always open.
And some items I read when they come out on Thursday, and some items I read at 3:45 in the afternoon, so. And we will move on to the next item? Oh, actually, we expect to see this, expect the way the second and third readings.
Yes, to meet the timeline, yes.
And I didn't recall, it was an emergency.
No, no, fair.
Yeah. Okay, Taylorsville Road, storm sewer.
This is one I did bring to you earlier this year. We did go out to bid for the storm improvements on Taylorsville. This is down by Bridgewater, going west down to, right before the curve, before it becomes rip-rep. There's been issues down there for a number of years where storm water, there's this large storm sewer that dumps into the side of the road there that has no side ditches left, and the water pretty much runs onto the road and has nowhere to go. So we would like to install a storm sewer on the north side of the road, and then have a couple laterals come across, one lateral coming across the street near the hard fill to pick up the ditch on the other side. We did bid this out, we had four bidders. The low bidder was CG Construction, they're out of Miami'sburg, at $93,823.25. The second, third bidders were within $2,000 of that number, and then we had one high number at $170,000. We would like to award it to CG Construction and Utilities. This Not To Exceed is $125,000, and it would be coming out of the Storm Sewer Fund. CG Construction, we did check references, and they've been around a while, and I think they're doing the water main behind the fire station too, if I'm not mistaken. So we're familiar with their work, so I think we're okay with them. And this is also, if we're asking if we could waive the second, third reading, it says non-emergency, so that they could start the construction.
Scholmer. Mr. Styline, then Mr. Shaw.
Russ, the Not To Exceed is $125,000. You said the bid was at 93...
93, yeah.
For...
It probably didn't need to be that high, but typically, we have, we come across things, you know, if you're hitting utilities, we have to move things. Usually, you have at least 10% on top of that for contingent three. But, yeah, it's, we can revise that if you feel it's too high, but it's not.
Since it's just a Not To Exceed, obviously, if they come in and it's ultimately with any change orders at 95 or even 100, that's not a problem. I just was wondering with, it seemed a bit higher than the normal 10%. I was trying to figure out if there was something specific that I didn't know about, or if it's just we're building in a buffer just in case.
Just a buffer.
I'm okay, like I said, since it's a Not To Exceed, just, I know you and our finance folks keep an eye on that stuff. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that, I'll go to Mr. Shaw here in a second. That probably is my question, what was the engineering estimate?
I believe right below that number, I think it was like $89,000. $89,359.
And council's good with $125 on the 93 bid? It doesn't have to come back to us if it goes all the way to $125? Mr. Burge, I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw, you were next, then Ms. Burge.
Thank you. Actually, two-part question. First, waive the second and third and to get these folks rolling, what is their estimated time of construction on this? 60 days? 60 days, okay. Are they anticipating going longer than that 60 days? I mean, we are talking about one of our main thoroughfares, you know, in and out of the city to that part of town.
We will not be closing the road. This will be, they may have it down to one lane for a while, but there won't be a closer on legs.
And kind of to the mayor's question, I would like to see this altered to read $110,000, Not To Exceed. I would be comfortable with that, waiving the second and third, and that is given a contingency upon that as well. I just think that, you know, kind of holding that a little bit, and I know, you know, everybody does a fine job of keeping those numbers in check, just making sure that we're not over exceeding ourselves.
All right, we'll go to change.
Ms. Burge, did you have a...
No, I'm sorry. Me, I'm listening.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll see this Monday at $110,000, waiving the second and third readings. And it's not on topic here, but it is to Russ. I noticed in the first, or in the March mayor's report, that Chambersburg Road was supposed to start June 6th, and I see in this manager's report now, it'll be mid-July.
It's actually early August now. Contractor, well, first off, it was pushed off due to money wasn't available at the time. Then it became the, because we pushed the contractor back, he had another project he had to finish, and then it got pushed again. He's planning on getting it done within 90 days, which would be mid-November. So have all the paving and everything done before the...
Hard plantes.
Right. And we will put signs out along there within two weeks ahead of time to let people know that the road will be closed.
Okay, all right. Mr. Styline.
Russ, if it's for consumption here, you said money wasn't available?
There was, there was a delay at the beginning. I'm not sure if it was the June date, it may have been done by June. It was end of May, we couldn't have started because of... Uh, there was, there was a delay at the beginning. I'm not sure if it was the June date. It may have been done by June. It was end of May, we couldn't have started because of...
Okay. Alright, uh, moving on to energy aggregation.
Uh, yeah, on that one, uh, we have no, uh, contacted all four of the consultants that we, that submitted RFPs. Uh, we have set up, uh, interviews with them. Uh, they will all be next week. Uh, I believe Scott and I at least will be in those interviews. Uh, we have asked them to come with some type of presentation and then we will question them after that. So, that's where we're at right now. We're hoping to the next work session to hopefully have a recommendation.
Okay. And those interviews, uh, open to the council, open to the public, or what's your thought process?
Yeah, typically, yeah, typically with that type of thing, it, it is usually a direct administrative, um, task. Um, and, uh, it's, would be out of the norm to, uh, to, to, to do it any, any other way. Uh, all other respondents and RFPs and bidding, um, you know, we've, we've relied on a standard set of questioning and not open it up, um, you know, for anything that wouldn't be consistent with the other respondents, just to keep the integrity of the process together.
Okay. And I know the gentleman from A G E was interested and interested in council.
Yeah, I talked to him just today, actually, and, uh, I told him tonight we were just, I was just updating you on when, uh, everything was gonna happen and that really, I told him that it wasn't a need to be here tonight for any reason.
Right. Right. I guess he's, his pitch was to make sure that he got in front of council with his pitch.
Well, he can come to the next meeting, 'cause that's when we discuss the recommendations if he wants to.
Okay. Okay. Well, then extend that invite to during your interview.
Alright.
Each, each respondent to, to interview. Alright. And moving on to the next agenda item, we have Huber Heights Recreation and Activity Center.
Yeah, this was brought back on your recommendation, I believe, Mr. Mayor, for a recommendation from the committee to take it for, um, final reading and, uh, and adoption at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I, I find the, uh, read ahead items, uh, interesting, but I think that the idea was to look through the original, uh, discussions on the aquatic center when it was intended to have an opening, uh, at that gate, to hear the comments that were made that caused council to change their minds and to get those, anything that might've been said by that council that changed their minds to make that change, uh, so that we could review that to see what kind of, uh, impression or promises, uh, that council had made. So, I'm not really sure how we ended up with stuff from two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the read ahead.
It was, uh, I know part of the request of Mr. Shaw of any discussion that has happened over the years about it, so it's just additional information.
Okay. So, that, that would be fine if this included those...
Like, doesn't include all the previous things that were previously submitted through the last meetings that have...
So, we've had the, the public, uh...
From the original that has been submitted several times through the committees.
Oh. So, it's part of the read heads for different?
Yeah, all the, all the information was initially provided in the initial stages back to the very beginning from Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay. Alright.
This, I think, reflects the carryover from the last meeting, which was specifically, as Scott indicated, Mr. Shaw's request that had we had any meeting subsequent to this where these issues were discussed about the opening of the gate.
Okay. Alright. My bad then. If, uh, if the original discussions about the aquatic center were in previous read aheads. Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, did we want to discuss?
If I may, since the last meeting, I have had three other, uh, people contact me saying they would like the gate to be opened, that there'd be an opening, uh, from three other, uh, property owners in that area, and I've had no other responses.
Okay. And, uh, they contacted you by phone, email?
Encounter just today, um, and then phone conversations as well. No emails, no.
Okay. Mr. Smith, did you have something?
I do. Mr. Falkowski, could you please explain to this council and to the residents, um, how we are able to change our minds if that's the will of council? Um, why is it that we're allowed to be able to change our mind if we said something different versus today? Could you kind of explain that, please?
Uh, this is a major change. Um, anytime, any rezoning or a major change, that process of going through Planning Commission, having a public hearing there, having a public hearing through City Council and having multiple readings, that City Council can make a decision of a change or a rezoning, uh, that kind of thing, that is in the purview of City Council. Um, an original decision by City Council on any zoning issue, um, is always up for, uh, lack of a better word, renegotiation at some point in the future due to whatever set of facts you would like to consider. Um, there, there's nothing, uh, and, uh, Mr. Montgomery, you can jump in on, there's nothing to say that this zoning decision is in perpetuity, no matter what, that you cannot change that. I don't know of anything that says you can never change this zoning.
Mr. Styline?
At the same token, and I'm just proffering the, the other side of that coin, is that council could, or at least individual council members could, look at the fact that those agreements were made and finding that there's not a sufficient reason to change the mind, say, promises made, promises captain can actually hold to what was done back then. There's nothing that forces this council to change its mind either.
Not at all.
So, it's essentially for the individual council members, um, and this is almost a rhetorical question, but it's for the council members that are here today to decide whether or not they feel persuaded one way or the other as compared to the council members that were in place years ago and whether they were persuaded or not. And the fact that there may be new information and new evidence now, um, that we are considering that may not have been in place or have been almost speculation back then, but now may have been proven up. Fair enough?
And if I may, this was brought up by residents about discussing it and that it started the discussion. And that's what the public hearings are, what went through Planning Commission and what has come to City Council, the public hearings for the discussion for consideration.
Mr. Smith?
And Scott, can you tell me how long, how long have we been talking about this? How many weeks have we been talking about it approximately?
This will be the third reading plus Planning Commission plus previous work sessions.
Actually, I was just looking at it. It started back in, in April fifth, um, and there were two work sessions. Then, um, at least three council meetings and about five work sessions.
So, basically, there's been enough time that the residents have had a chance to voice their opinion one way or, or another, correct?
Residents within a five-hundred-foot radius of the property have been notified multiple times for each of the meetings. Um, and it's had, discussion has been out in the public since then, yes, uh, for as many comments as possible. And like I said, there's really only been a handful, um, of comments at all, and I know I have not received any against.
Thank you.
Alright. And, uh, council? We'll see this for the third reading. Uh, is council, is the committee prepared to make a recommendation for passage? Did we want to, uh, I, I, really, I don't know that it really makes that much of a difference here because involving, involving discussion, but it'd be interesting to, to know if the, if the, if the committee wanted to make a recommendation or not. I guess we won't have a discussion on making a recommendation.
Right.
Alright, interesting. Uh, where are we at? We're in July, right? Somehow I've managed to get from the other agenda. And moving on to Carriage Trails. Go.
Uh, this is the, uh, these are three separate items, actually six separate items, three separate, uh, sections of a Carriage Trail subdivision. As you recall, previously, we passed, this council passed the Eighteenth Amendment, which included funding for, uh, TIF funding for six sections. The first three sections, uh, have already been approved and gone through the special assessment process, which is in addition to the TIF funding. The other three sections are here today. Uh, Section two-two has sixteen lots, um, at six thousand dollars per lot, which will be ninety-six thousand dollars of special assessment. That will be placed on each individual lot, four hundred and fifty dollars per year for twenty-five years. Section three-three is nineteen lots. Uh, those are smaller lots. They would be three thousand dollars per lot for a total of fifty-seven thousand dollars in special assessments, uh, to be assessed on each lot at two hundred twenty-five dollars a year for twenty-five years. And finally, Section four-point-five, uh, four-dash-five is twenty-one lots at four thousand dollars per lot for eighty-four thousand dollars of special assessments. That would be assessed at each lot, three hundred dollars per year for twenty-five years. The total of the three sections for special assessments is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that would be four fifty-six lots. Um, this is the finalization of the, of the lots that we approved for funding, um, previously. And, um, we ask that you pass this at the next meeting, and, uh, it's not an emergency, so that, um, I'm sure that the construction season will be coming up and these sections will be in line to be, uh, to begin, uh, shortly.
Council?
Uh...
Miss Burge?
A little bit of, uh, paperwork clear up on, uh, Section two-point-two under the, uh, purpose limited, under the, uh, financial implications, um, there is a thing in there that we've got twenty-five new lots in there and, and the, and the last line. Shouldn't that be sixteen new lots? Okay. Uh... Okay, just, since it's going in the record, I thought I would bring it up. Um, on, second question, um, when we went from nineteen lots, uh, to twenty-one lots, the assessment, no, when we went from sixteen to nineteen, the assessment per lot went from six thousand to three thousand. Then when we went up to twenty-one lots, it went up to four thousand. Um... Oh, the lots are bigger. Okay. And my last question has to do with, uh, Exhibit A, two F I, our I and, or F one and two, whatever you want to call it. Um, historically, how are the actual costs of improvements in the previously dedicated section compared to the amounts that are agreed to? Um, have they come in line or?
The assessments have been consistent along, among lot size.
Okay.
The, the construction costs have been consistent in terms of, uh, you know, per lot. It seems, it, it varies depending on the lot, so, um, these constructed, the special assessments are just a small portion of the, uh, actual cost of the construction.
Okay. And then under, under what circumstances was, uh, I, 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 uh, check it, uh, the, uh, A two, never have A two, F, double Y?
I'm not sure where you're at.
Um, I'm trying to find it here.
I need to... Are you in the petition or are you in the?
Exhibit, Exhibit A, two F.
Two F.
F, and then down to the, um, the triple, one, two, I don't even see, uh, there's a lot of other things. I... Um, I'll go back and see what I saw and I'll, I'll inform that desk, but thank you.
Okay, that, it's consistent with, uh, the, the way we've always, this is the same, that's the paperwork. Just to say that it's a consistent basis, it's, uh, not sure. Uh, you want me to talk to the file? We have, we ever get clarification from Alan on that, uh, on the resolutions of necessity where it says now therefore being resolved by the City Council of Huber Heights, that three-fourths of all members elect their appointment there to concur with the fact that it's not gonna be emergency legislation? You were, I think, I think you sent a message to Alan or you were gonna check with bond counsel to see, because, you know, that could affect the outcome of the, of, of the voting, yeah. That was in there before when they were being passed as emergency. Let me follow up with Alan. He, he, I didn't get it. From all the rules, there wouldn't be any requirement for a three-fourth vote, but I think you were gonna see if there are any things with bond counsel or the attorneys that require that to be in there and that be by a three-fourth vote. So, we probably should clarify that before they're on the agenda on Monday.
Okay, council? Alright, I guess we'll see this on Monday.
Excuse me, I apologize. So, what we're looking for is not an emergency, but we would like to have it passed at the next meeting, is that correct?
If we wait four weeks to, or four, three ratings and emergency, it'd be fall, or close to, another six weeks, I'm confident, so. So, it's council's decision. I, I think it fits into the construction timeframe, in terms of when they're gonna be building. That would require six votes for the major. Uh, alright, we'll see this, bud.
No recommendation on the waiver. I think that we're planning...
I recommend the way the second, third at the council meeting.
Roger. I think, uh, I think that's what we're expecting. Alright, moving on to the next agenda item. I think that's the NUP agreement.
Yes, thank you. I've got that one on. Um, it was brought, um, uh, to my attention, there was a conversation, I believe, um, with the, uh, president and... with the, uh, president and, uh, CEO of Ruth's Learning Center. Um, and I believe it was Mr. Shaw and, uh, and Alan perhaps, or you, you, uh, you had some knowledge about this, so help, I don't know anyways, I didn't want to speak out of turn, but.
No, no, we, there was several conversations.
Right, right. Uh, so this is follow-up to all that. Uh, we, we've met, we've, uh, met with the existing lessor of the, uh, of the building. And, um, what we need to find out is if, uh, council is interested in having our law department draft what will likely be a unique lease agreement, uh, for the use of both of these entities. Um, the one entity, of course, is a church. Uh, the difference between the church using it and the Ruth Learning Center is although they are charitable, uh, they are charging and conducting a, a, an operation and a business there, uh, for their tutoring and their learning services. Um, other than that, there does not seem to be a, a difference. Uh, there is a, um, service-oriented aspect to the, the community. However, they are open to, you know, enrollees outside of the community, um, much as the church is open to attendees outside of the community as well. So, uh, not many differences there at all. Uh, what I've attached is the original agreements and requirements for the construction of the, um, NEP building or the, um, uh, the, the building down there, uh, as well as the current lease agreement. So, uh, what we would need to do is if, um, we would like to move ahead with this, then we will have, um, the law department begin working to draft a new agreement to include, it would not be a sublease of Destiny Subleasing to Ruth's. We would basically be dual leasing the exact same spot and location. Um, it's not like we're leasing one part of the building to one entity, one part of the building to the other. We're leasing the entire building to both entities. So, obviously, there's going to need to be some, some work on that.
Okay. And did I hear you say that, uh, Ruth's Learning Center charges for their services?
Yes.
And, uh, do we know if that fits into the purpose of? I, I know that it, I, I, I'm guessing Campfire actually charged for some of theirs, even if it didn't cover all their costs. But, uh, but, uh, I know we have, uh, uh, restrictions on what can be used or what can be put into that facility. Miss Shaw?
Sure, as Rob's looking at a couple of different things. Um, I wanted to kind of give my background on this. Um, I have had several conversations with Alan and to look into this and see if there would be any issues of moving forward on this. Um, initially upfront, um, I was advised that there was no issues except for, as it reads, that council would have to approve this. That's literally the only thing that's standing in the, in the way. Um, I know that, uh, Ruth's Learning Center and, and their board of phenomenally great people, um, and Destiny's Church have been in, have had several conversations and are in agreeance that they would like to, you know, cooperate together with the city to make this site, you know, as feasible as possible for the community. Um, I, I know myself, uh, and even your, uh, even you, Mr. Mayor and Mrs. Burge, uh, we, we got to meet, uh, some of the individuals, uh, with Ruth's Learning Center and, and got to, you know, listen to their proposal. Um, and I, I think the work that they're looking to do in our community is amazing. Um, and, uh, and if, in my opinion, uh, the only thing that's standing in their way is a, uh, is a council approval to send our law department, uh, moving forward to get this finalized. Um, they have great dreams, uh, for the location such as a community garden. Um, and they have been, uh, working on several different aspects on their Facebook page and things of that nature. Uh, they have a strong business plan put together and they have a lot of strong ties to the community. I think this is a, a great, um, plan for the area, um, not only for Ward One, but for the entire city. Um, and, uh, this is just another, you know, avenue of, of community and the city working together to, to make, you know, not only the city, but even the community, um, you know, more reinforced in, in our aspect of, of educating and learning, uh, youth and adults as well. Um, so that's kind of my background in it.
Yeah, the only knowledge that I have beyond that legal interpretation, uh, is, uh, that the program is a community development type program. It's not necessarily a defined term. It relates to a consolidation plan, um, that has some other sub-references. And in essence, it basically does just require that, I, I think that if the community designates that as a community development program and authorizes that, uh, through, uh, through resolution, uh, that it does qualify. Obviously, there'd be a problem if we set up something that wouldn't closely match that, but, uh, based on the mission of that particular organization and, and what they're doing, it's very similar to what the, the church has done and to some extent what Campfire was doing, but more focused on a, on an educational and a tutoring component.
Yes, and, and it makes sense that, that, that these organizations can charge for their services. So, the other, uh, item that I'd like to be addressed is, we see in the read-ahead, and I know that I've only spoken to Ruth's Learning Center, uh, about this, and I haven't heard anything directly from, uh, Destiny Church and Pastor Smith. Has he contacted you?
Yes, the three of us had a meeting. Uh, the, um, uh, and, and her name escapes me. Um, the, Crystal, yes. Um, yeah, Crystal Miss Prelo and, uh, also Pastor Smith. The three of us sat down and, and discussed this. And, uh, the church is behind it. Uh, they don't see it as a truce, that they're not using the facility every single day. And they're confident that they can work together to work out a schedule. It's just how we define that and, and get some things. We had discussions, things as who's responsible for utilities, how, you know. So, there's several details that need to be worked out and, um, it's going to take some, obviously, some, some work by legal to get that done. And if, um, uh, council would like to move forward with this, uh, then that's the next step.
And, uh, I guess my que- a couple of questions are kind of related. How did you capture those items to give them to legal? And on top of that is, uh, why haven't we asked them to go to their legal to draft up the equation and just have our legal map it into, uh, something that the city can, can work with? So, that the majority of the work is done and some of those finer points that, uh, I can see contention on and if the relationship ever falls out, uh, would have been something that they came to us with as opposed to, to the city proposing in the first place?
Some of the items within it were brought, and I mentioned utilities, a couple of others were brought by them. Was it brought by their individual council? No. Uh, the idea of if we're going to have our council move forward, I think this entire thing was looked at as a partnership, the city being the host and finding uses and utilizing the resource, starting with the building and us controlling the building and designing and sponsoring these programs essentially. Uh, and that's basically where we thought it fell. Um, I, I have not reached out and followed up with the church and/or Miss Prelo, um, but I could certainly do that regarding having them draft up something and bring it to us.
Yeah, I, I, it seems to me, unless it's, as your meeting came out with, uh, they're going to pay for sixty, forty, fifty, fifty, all that kind of things. If those things haven't been ironed out in your meeting, I would, I would think that it would be better if they brought that to you first instead of.
Oh, I agree, yes. I, I see what you're saying, yes, I agree. And that's effectively what we would do. We would utilize us and, and basically, um, you know, our law director to, uh, to, to document that. They'll come to agreement and sign off on it. But yes, their ideas of how they think it's going to work best, absolutely. Um, and I think that they're, they're willing and eager to do that, uh, and to continue their conversations and bring to us what they think is going to work. We'll just check off, make sure it's legal and have everybody sign to it.
Okay. And, uh, and I'll look at that some spurge in a second. But, uh, whatever it does, have an easy opt-out clause and who gets to do it and, and determine what it is. So, the, if the relationship falls out, one of the parties or the other gets to, to be the person or the entity that says that it's over and takes on the responsibility of the, of the whole rest of it, I think is, will be an important aspect in the relationship. Miss Burge?
Couple of questions. Uh, well, first of all, I, I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support what they're trying to do there. I think if, uh, they're able to make it happen, that'll be a great addition to the community. Um, I'm trying to read the, um, section under taxes. There's a handwritten note that was put in there and it says something about not being liable for something. Um.
There's probably some notes regarding specific to the Campfire Agreement. That's where I got these documents. Um, so these documents were attached to our Campfire USA Agreement. It may not have been specific to the original, um, acquisition and building of the property. So, that might be what you're saying, that's what the handwritten notes are.
So, they're not, they're not, uh, they are exempt from real estate taxes?
Uh. Yes.
And the city pays the water, they will pay the power, is that the way it goes? Um.
Again, that was likely from a different, are you looking, which agreement are you looking at? I'm sorry, let's start again.
The, uh, Agreement of Lease, the original one that was put in there in, I guess, two thousand and three. It was a five-year lease.
Okay, that would have been the Campfire USA Agreement and that's no longer in effect. The current agreement is the, um, agreement, uh, that's listed under, um, Destiny Church's lease agreement. And that's the current agreement that we have. And of course, with this project, we would have a complete replacement agreement as well.
This is, this is Destiny Church.
Okay, yes, yeah. Yeah, you're right, two, that is twenty thirteen. For some reason, the one isn't showing up. But yes, what is in there is what is currently, currently going on, correct?
Okay, um, I guess, since, since it is our building, um, how often do we expect to inspect those facilities and verify renters insurance to make sure that we're covered?
Well, the building is, um, I wouldn't say inspected. Um, we have, uh, Mr. Gray go down with any related, uh, major maintenance. Um, but as far as examining the programming and stuff, we actually have, well, it's kind of convenient because we actually have one of our staff members that, um, does a lot of the programming, that, uh, works and volunteers with the church. So, uh, we've been fortunate that we have that direct connection, so anything that's come up. Uh, but a provision like that and for that would, uh, would certainly be something we would want to include, uh, in any future agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like insurance is addressed in this agreement, right up to the taxes portion.
Yeah, but when you split it up between two, I mean, that's what the, the tenant, they're supposed to carry it. My question is, just like car insurance, you know, people don't always carry it. Similar along the way, since it's our building, we want to make sure it doesn't lapse, yeah.
Right, the next agreement with split tenants is going to be, I guarantee, different language. It's going to be unique, so it's, we're going to have to address that. Um, this is easy to address with one tenant, um, it's been, the language will need to address both. Miss Shaw?
And, and I'm sure Rob could definitely agree in, in my next statement here. Having spoken with, with these entities and, you know, done a lot of behind-the-scenes conversation on this, both of, both of these entities are willing to do whatever it takes to get this ball rolling and, and is willing to play above board and even go beyond, um, to make sure that everything is kept up and right with the city. Uh, literally, all they need right now, in accordance with the agreement, is the go-ahead from city council for our legal department to move forward. And I can almost guarantee you that every one of your concerns will be addressed in there and it has even been addressed in some of the meetings that I've had and conversations, that, you know, they are willing to move forward, they have a great business plan. Um, and this is just nothing but a win-win situation all the way around.
Mr. Campbell?
If, if they're looking for council support, they have mine. So, is this something that would be, uh, before council on the agenda?
I'm, I'm not sure we'll have a resolution and everything prepared for Monday.
If you will at some point.
Absolutely, yeah, we just.
I'm totally behind it and, uh, support that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we'll look for this, uh, probably in the next work session with, uh, discussion on.
And at that time, I know, um, I'll invite, uh, Ms. Prelo to come in. Um, I followed up with her, but I, I felt that this meeting might be a little bit, um, um, more our discussion and then we'll bring her in to, uh, fill in some programming and stuff. Uh, she's got a nice presentation of her actual program.
All right, thank you very much. And moving on to, uh, charter review.
I guess I'll introduce that topic. Um, as council is aware, and some of council has served and many council has been present at meetings of, uh, the Charter Review Commission, uh, the Charter Review Commission meeting has been, or the Charter Review Commission itself has been meeting, uh, weekly since late April, uh, with a couple of week exceptions. Um, diligently, uh, diving into the charter and exploring, uh, some of the different issues, having a lot of good debate. We've also, um, run a lot of these ideas through legal counsel as well, uh, for sanctioning. Um, we do have, I think, two members of the Charter Review Commission here tonight, um, besides the members of council that serve on it, Tony Wadley's on the back and Matthew Truman. Um, so we've gotten to the point, um, where the Charter Review Commission has reviewed from the beginning of the charter in section one-on-one through section five-point-one-zero of the city charter. And we kind of got to a point at the last meeting where there's a recognition that we're, our opportunity for placing any of the proposed charter amendment, uh, issues on the ballot for November is rapidly closing and the timeframe we have to file those before the boards of election. So, there was a discussion, um, held and the recommendation of the Charter Review Commission was to present the recommendations to this point in the charter, uh, to city council tonight in order to allow council to weigh in on some of those recommendations, to have some discussion about them and to determine if any of these were appropriate for pursuing, um, on the ballot in November. Um, obviously, when, if you've read through some of the recommendations, you'll see that some of them have more impact on city operations and city processes than others. Um, so I think if you were to proceed with something and moving forward, there certainly could be a prioritization. Um, one of the big ones, obviously, has been the issue that's been discussed. I know at these meetings, at city council meetings and, um, in a number of different venues, which has to do with the issues of, uh, emergency legislation, uh, readings of legislation and effective dates of legislation. So, um, these recommendations cover the changes from the Charter Review Commission as it speaks to those particular items. Um, so I'm happy to go through these, uh, individually. Um, we can tackle them as questions if you've already had the opportunity to review the materials in advance. Um, I did provide a, a redlined, uh, version of the proposed changes for each section where a change was recommended. And, um, you know, it'd be council's wish of how you'd like to proceed in terms of the discussion on these items.
Okay, I guess I'll start because, uh, I, I have a, a strong opinion on, uh, uh, on section five-zero-four, the readings. Uh, to me, uh, the city charter is a pretty, pretty doggone good document considering it's, uh, was passed in nineteen eighty-three with not a lot of need for a lot of changes, uh, in and of itself, the way it's written and, and obviously was written by very talented people. But the, uh, one section that comes up all the time is emergency legislation and, uh, the waiving of the readings and, and calling, uh, uh, things emergencies or not. Uh, so, uh, I guess some background and, and why you have, uh, three readings and, uh, and the, and emergency legislation is, I'm sure it has to do with, uh, giving the public the opportunity to look at the things before council, uh, uh, and being able to discuss it among the public and be able to provide feedback to the council itself. So, uh, those ideas are, are, I support those fully and, uh, see that as a good protection, uh, for, uh, the community. On the other hand, uh, it does leave a lot of administrative things that, uh, uh, the public wouldn't necessarily discuss a million times or a lot, a lot, uh, to go through, uh, pretty, uh, repetitive or boring or not very interesting process. And I keep saying things like, uh, copier contracts. Why do we have to have three readings of? Why do we have to have three readings of copier contracts? Uh, when it's a normal type business, you're not gonna have a lot of discussion. Uh, there you might have a copier company that may want to, to have their input, so it's good to give them a, a little bit of time to input. But, uh, you know, typical things like that, you know, you might want to pass and, and the first time it comes up. And, uh, and let people come to you afterward and say, "Well, I could have saved you sixty-five dollars on a, on a copier thing," and, and you say, "Well, please pay more attention next year," uh, kind of thing. But I look at, uh, what we have here with, uh, going one reading for resolutions and two readings for ordinances, and, and we go back to my, uh, the item that got me interested into coming to council all the time and making, uh, my comments, and that is the March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven meeting, where we had a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate an enter-to-agreement for the purchase of the land and declaring emergency in the first reading. And that was the first time that we learned about the, that meeting was the first time we learned about the Aquatic Center, and we spent seven hundred thousand dollars by passing this piece of legislation on the first reading. And I'm wondering what protection does the current proposal that came out of the Charter Commission, uh, offer to ensure that the public has, uh, good discussion on, uh, an item as important as, uh, that major recreational complex we had? And I am not seeing it in, uh, what's coming out of that commission. All I see is a way to avoid, a lot of people seeing that council does a lot by emergency legislation, and it eliminates that, but it doesn't offer the same protections. All right, so I was hoping that the commission would come up with some kind of mechanism where we can take care of the normal business in one or two readings and have it go emergency, but not also have major projects fall under that same, uh, lack of readings protections. And I'm not seeing that at all from what I'm getting in, in this, uh, protection. So if the members of the commission, or those that have been paying attention and know why it came can tell, can address what kind of protections that we're offering to, when we eliminate those by going to one reading, two readings.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. Um, so let me address a couple of different things here, um, which was the fact of the resolution's going to an effect immediately. In a, um, in a proposal that I submitted with the Charter Review Committee, um, there was a, um, historical chart that was done with a lot of surrounding communities. We are one of three surrounding communities that still have a three resolution reading. Um, the majority, and when I say majority, I'm looking about eighty-five percent majority, is at a one resolution reading. Um, so I guess, and coming back to your March eleventh meeting that you discussed, where something was passed, you know, as an emergency resolution, a lot of money was spent, and your question to, to me that I'm gonna answer at this point in time is, what, what protections are in place to make sure that doesn't happen again? Well, very simply is the election. Three of the four members that voted for that are no longer here. So, having said that, also in that same breakdown, the ordinances, moving those to two, um, readings, uh, we are also one of four communities that still do that. Um, and the majority of them are at one, there's about a small tie for two, um, when it comes to, comes to ordinance, um, readings. With my proposal of this, and I'll, I'll give you the same quote-unquote spiel that I gave them, um, it, it's very simple. I mean, it breaks it down to the fact that by doing this, the community is no longer getting the, the perception that the city is moving at an emergency pace, rushing through everything. Um, if you go back, and, and I, I know you were paying attention, uh, early last year when I gave a, a, um, presentation at the podium and stated roughly, I want to say fifty-five, fifty-eight percent of our city business between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen was an emergency situation. By doing this, we're almost eliminating that. To doing exactly what the city of Beaver Creek says, we barely use that at all. This is also allowing city staff and the city administration to operate, in my opinion, a lot more efficiently, um, whereas they're not tied down to mandating things over and over again. Also, our clerk of council doesn't have to publish these items over and over again and print them out and send them to several different locations. So, in all honesty, this is a win-win-win-win-win for several different individuals, and I can tell you that just recently, several communities has put this on the ballot, and it is passed with flying colors, um, as in my honest opinion, um, personally, that it will do such in the city as well. Um, I, I think this has been a long time coming. I know I've had discussions with our law director even at the end of last year that this was something that was needed, and, uh, and I'm sure that members of the community and folks on this diet, um, you know, will, uh, will voice their, you know, concerns or, or their approval moving forward, but I think this is definitely one of many items that definitely needs to see voter, um, you know, and it needs to see it in November, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not convinced, of course, because I, I believe that the community should have the opportunity to, to provide input as we go forward on the major projects. And this right here will make it so that it's not required. Okay, and it's not required now because we waive readings and we go to emergency, but then individuals that are in the community, like I was previously, can go and say, "Listen, this was an important item that we should have had more input on, and we didn't because council chose to waive the readings and make it emergency," which is a lot more effective argument than if you choose to waive the readings and make emergency easier now. So to, to go to the public and say, "Oh, we're tired of having a bad reputation for, uh, doing a lot by emergency, so we're just gonna make nothing an emergency or waive all the readings in advance," is get you out of it later, but it doesn't offer the protection that drives the conversation to the community. So, I, I would hope that when this is written or proposed to the community, it would have something like, uh, maybe a dollar amount or, uh, some way to define what kind of projects go forward or get extra readings or not extra readings. Uh, and that's a, a, a difficult choice, but, or a difficult way to, uh, put in writing, something that would be difficult to put in writing, uh, especially to make it last in a document that we hope doesn't need changes for another thirty years. But I definitely like the protections that's in the current document. I would like to see some of the inefficiencies that those protections cause to be eliminated when we change it, but I don't want to see those protections eliminated when we go forward with it. And Mr. Rogers had a, had a comment, then, or, or Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, sorry.
The only point I would make in terms of your example is, you know, those protections, you know, existed here, but it was still done to prove it, uh, to your very point. So that doesn't necessarily mean, um, that that couldn't still happen with, without the change. Uh, the other option, or the other point I'd like to make is, um, you know, there would be an opportunity for public discussion of these items in the work sessions prior to the formal reading, as almost all items have been going through that process. And it does not preclude the possibility of council of having multiple readings beyond the required reading. Now, if a resolution only required one reading, but council's wish was to extend that to multiple readings, we've done that in one case where we, uh, council felt particularly strong about having multiple readings, it went to five readings under the current system. So there would still be the opportunity for items of significance, if it was council's wish to do so, to have readings beyond the, the one reading, should they choose to do so.
And I'm not worried about a council that gets put in place that has my values. What I'm worried about is the council that was in place before my values were, were coming in.
I understand, but their, their values don't represent necessarily everybody's values. And I will, just another point just to make is, this was a unanimous recommendation of the Charter Review Commission. Um, we, you know, publicly advertised all this. Um, we had very little citizen participation in the Charter Review Commission meetings, very few people, uh, attended. I know some, like Tony and Matt, uh, you know, even put notices out on social media and stuff to encourage people to comment, voice their comments. And, um, we didn't really get any feedback from the public on, on these, you know, a lot of these changes, so, um, you know, I think that shows you kind of, to some degree, where, you know, the majority of the public lies, in terms of their level of involvement.
I doubt the majority of the public has any idea what's in the Charter Review recommendations, so.
I'm saying the opportunity to participate in the discussions was made available to the public extensively. I mean, we've been meeting on a weekly basis, uh, for two and a half months, so.
Yes, and I'm just, I am just, uh, reiterating my position that, uh, was stated before the council, the commission even came, uh, in existence, and I'm going to reiterate those, uh, extensively, because I personally believe that the community should have the opportunity to, uh, the council, yes, the, the previous council in the case that I had decided to waive the readings and go to emergency, but it certainly made my case that council should be more open and, uh, specifically in cases like this, easier for me to make. And I believe it should be easier for the next person sitting in that audience to make it as well. So, to be able to point out that, uh, we should have had a, a opportunity as a community to discuss that before we spent money on it, uh, is, uh, a case that I think, uh, needs to be known and, uh, and publicized widely. Sorry, I saw hands over here, and I, Ms. Smith, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I do respect your position as the mayor, but what is the effective argument on holding a meeting until twelve-thirty or one o'clock in the morning? How are the constituents or the residents out there supposed to have feedback when they're half asleep or they're gone, or they, they've completely shut us out because we are holding them up? I mean, where are all of the constituents at? They used to be here prior to your election and being in the office, and now they're nowhere to be found unless there's something that's, that's really affecting that individual person, and then they only want to stay for a little portion of the meeting because it lasts until wee hours of the morning. So, I, I'm not understanding the argument here. Um, you want more, you want more feedback from the residents, but honestly, these meetings are being held hostage so that they cannot participate. Just my two cents.
Ms. Shaw?
Not defending the, uh, mayor's position on this one, because I'm actually in agreeance with the reduction of readings. But, but, but to the attendance versus the time of the meetings, I've been attending council meetings for lots and lots and lots of years, and I can tell you that in the days where the meetings were an hour and a half and everybody was gone, it would still be me and one other person in the audience. Truth is, there are more people in attendance today than there was four years ago.
All right, and we don't need to have that debate and make the meeting, meeting go to twelve o'clock, because I, I certainly could cut out a lot of, a lot of, a, a lot of, uh, some conversations that, uh.
I, I did have another question, though. Um, I, I know you have an interest in shortening things to a point, but you don't want to take away to... Do you have a middle-of-the-road solution, uh, something in, in, in the middle of this and what we have now?
Some kind of priority system, some kind of dollar limit, some kind, uh, two readings, or, uh... I mean, there's a number of different things that, uh, that could have been, but just going to, to one reading and, and basing it on resolution or ordinance, uh, like I said, the resolutions have some pretty important, uh, aspects behind them that, that not all resolutions do, but certainly some of them.
And your example was a good one, because, and, and I, I will admit, I wasn't familiar with that, but seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for a, a resolution. Um, but that's a rare, very rare case, and I think that any council in their, um, in their own workings could, could easily find avenues around any system set in place, to be quite honest, if they want, if they chose to do so. And, and that's just to your argument that, you know, past council or, or whatever. I, I think any council could, the council could work their way around the rules if they really felt compelled to do so. I mean.
Right, and the point, the point I, the point I'm making is, the, the more you have to work around something, the easier it is to point to the fact that you're working around something, all right? And the easier it is to make the point that maybe you shouldn't have been working around it in this case. So if council wants to make the point that we're working around the fact that we're, uh, not holding multiple readings on copier things, everybody's gonna understand that. All right, you need somebody to stand up there all day long, "Oh, I don't understand why we have emergency for copier things," right? And the rest of the public is going to say, "Boy, you're a loudmouth," right? And, and chit-chat, 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 and pretty much everybody ignores the stuff that doesn't make any sense, even though, you know, it gets annoying to hear it a lot of times, it's still chit-chat that, that's like that. But when you stand up with something that makes sense, and you, and you point it out, it's good to have that procedure and the fact that you had to go around that procedure, uh, in your favor.
So you then are proposing multiple readings on, 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 be it a resolution or an ordinance, say, two and two, making them both two readings? It reduces what we have now, but it's still less than?
It still leaves a, a little bit of a comment period for, for the resolution. And, and it would, but, uh, but you might define emergency differently. Or so, emergency isn't if it's less than twenty-five thousand, right?
Well, be clear that the distinction between emergency legislation and waiving readings are two separate things, for everybody to understand. And, uh, one of the things that we did as an exercise that Nancy had asked for as part of the Charter Review Commission was to really identify in what cases and the types of circumstances that you would use resolutions versus ordinances. And in a good majority of the cases, a lot of the items that would be considered more major items like rezonings, uh, major changes, uh, things that change the effect of law are done through ordinance and not through resolutions. And I would probably argue that sometimes things have been done here through resolution that more legitimately probably shouldn't, should have been done through an ordinance, um, in certain cases. So I think making the distinction between those two types of legislation is important, too, and understanding the, the types of items that typically would be done through those different devices.
And that only points out another reason why not to make the resolutions any different if you can, uh, convince your law director or whoever writes the law to go from an ordinance to a resolution, and then just.
What I'm saying, though, is there's generally accepted practices of the types of things. that should be going through those, those types of legislation, depending on the nature of the action that's being taken.
Certainly. And you said that occasionally we go outside of there. So it seems like occasionally if somebody really wanted to, to not have that second reading, they would campaign to have it as a resolution and have it written as a resolution. And now you've worked around that.
Well, I kind of agree with Mr. Otto that you're not gonna create a system that's going to prevent, uh, determine group of people from working around the system. I mean, if they want to go on record as doing that and taking those steps, then, to Mr. Shaw's point, then ultimately they're going to be held accountable to the electorate as a result of those decisions. Ms. Birch.
Oh, so I would think that if someone brought a, a, a resolution in here that anyone on the dais thought should be an ordinance, we have the authority to bring that up and to ask that it be changed, if there's a dollar amount or some, excuse me, or some factor in there that, that we're not comfortable with. So, you know, we have that alternative. But when we did this, what we were trying to do was to weed out the administrative stuff that routinely, by the past council and this council, got passed through emergency legislation, because it just wasn't prudent to drag it out longer. And by keeping them, the two readings on the ordinances with the obvious option of, of dragging it out longer, if we needed to, we still protected the right of public input and, and transparency in what we were doing. So, we thought that we were, we were protecting everyone and addressing a more efficient system.
So what's your answer to the March eleven, two thousand, or March fourteen, two thousand and eleven, where you have a resolution that passed and authorized seven hundred thousand dollars to, uh, purchase the land so that you could start the aquatic center? How does, how does this help protect the public?
Well, perhaps, if, you know, if we had had, if they had had, I, you know, I, I can't look back and second guess a group that, that I wasn't in on that discussion. But perhaps if someone on the dais had said, "Perhaps this should have been an ordinance versus a resolution," so that we could vet this further and get a, a wider approval and an understanding of what was going on. But we can't just say from, from where we are right now, that we're gonna be able to put a protection in place, a system that's going to protect us against all variables. We're trying to find one here that, that keeps it open and transparent, but still allows for an efficient system.
Okay. So, and my point is, this takes away the transparency, but doesn't offer the protect, doesn't offer the protection. So it makes it more efficient for those little items, which is fine, but because that was one of the objections, uh, one of the objectives, was to make it more efficient for the little items.
But where do you think the protection's not there, sir? I, I think it's there.
You have three readings now...
Yes.
That will allow the public to have public input for all three of those readings. And if council decides that the public doesn't deserve that input, they can waive those readings. But they have to go on record now, saying that they don't believe that the public deserves to have that input. Okay?
In reality...
Or that they don't believe that the public would be interested in input.
Correct. Correct. Right? So, they go on record now to say that the public won't be interested in it, or, or shouldn't have input into it there. So, that somebody that, like me, that says jeepers creepers on it, the thing is important as the aquatic center, we should have had more opportunity to have discussions on how it was going to be developed. You've got council members that don't believe that same thing as me.
No. All right. Well...
All right? So that's the point I made, and...
But the protections didn't protect that from happening.
But it, but it's, but it caused a change. It, it doesn't protect, and it, it, it does protect it from happening if the council members realize or think that it's going to cause a change.
But in reality, we have, right now, we have six opportunities, right, for the, for the city to engage. You've got the work sessions and then the, the council meetings, right? They have...
And sometimes more if they, if they go through planning commission.
And sometimes more. So now we're lowering that to four opportunities for the public.
To two.
No, to four, because you've still got the work session.
And, and really only one if the, if the meetings are done in executive session like they were done, uh, for the aquatic center. So in the aquatic center, you had one meeting, it was a meeting they were voting to, to spend money. And you learned about it when the, when the agenda was published on a Friday afternoon, on the read aheads that were the quality read aheads that you had at that time, which, you know, I haven't been able to prove, improve the read aheads to the degree I'd like to, but certainly they're better than what you could see back in two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
So you, so you had an agenda item on there that says, "We're gonna purchase land for, uh, a recreational facility," and that's all the public had until you walked into that meeting and saw the presentation.
Okay. I, all right. That, that's a difference between you and I, because I prefer, I, I'm a person, a glass half-full person. And I've, I believe to not look back, except to look at where we've come from and, and where we are right now. And I think we're in a better place right now because of where we are. You are the mayor, you have the opportunity in executive session to keep something from, like that, from happening again. The charter would not have prevented that from happening. You have three readings in there.
Fine. You have three readings.
Yes.
And so a person like me can say, "Hey, why didn't we have three readings before we started spending money?"
Great. And, and I understand where you're coming from, but this charter, what we have recommended, does not take away the, the input from the community. It does not lock us in to two readings. It is presented as an alternative to help us operate more efficiently.
Right. So, and I, and I will say that it will help operate more efficiently for the little things that the, the community won't have a lot of input in. All right? And it protects the council from the negative aspects of waiving readings when a bigger item that deserves public input is there. So...
If you, if you put six readings on here, that wouldn't prevent that from happening, you as mayor prevent that from happening.
Yeah, I, I think it's the, the people sitting on this dais are really the only people that can ensure that...
Yes, they are. And if they, and if they don't do it, what protection does the citizens have, or what argument does the citizen have? All right? If, if they go out there and they authorize us to pass everything in the first reading with no public input, then shame on them.
Well, that's what they're proposing.
That's what they're proposing. And, and that's what I'm aga, and that's what, and, and that's what I'm against. All right? And that's why I think that citizens shouldn't...
You go and you campaign against this, then when, if it goes to the ballot.
Or...
Because it's to put in front of the people for them to decide if they want multiple readings or not.
Right. And, and I'm saying that's exactly what I will be doing if it goes in, under this way, because the idea is to make it more efficient, so that we can get rid of council business that needs to be done fast, but we still need the protections that the three readings give us. Okay? And if it doesn't have those three protections in there, then yes. If it goes, if it goes to the ballot this way, I will be campaigning against it.
Well, apparently, based on your example, that those protections weren't very solid before, anyway, so they could be waived, anyway.
Or, or we could have the same council members you had six years ago. Right? Ms. Truman.
Matt Truman, um, seven six zero one, Navy Court. Um, I'm, I'm a member of the Charter Review Board, but I can only speak for myself. Um, so just a, I, I guess I have a question. What changes would you have put in, in there? Or would you have changed anything? Or...
Well, I, I...
I get where you're, you want...
I have always been...
You want the people to have, um, an opportunity to know what city government's doing. I want the same thing. I voted for the change. Okay? They will have that opportunity. My question is, or I guess, um, anything that goes before council can be put on an emergency right now. It's been proven, it's done, I don't know, how many times has it been done? Who, who knows? So they can do whatever they want, anyway. Uh, council can do whatever they want, anyway.
And what happens? And what happens? People's, people's antennas go up and go, "Why? Why? Why?" And we get questions all the time. "Why? Why? Why?" That's a good thing. When it comes to...
Does it change their mind?
Well, you tell me, does it change their mind in the ballot four years ago, three years ago? Did it change their mind in the ballot a year ago?
I, emergency legislation did, because there was too much emergency legislation.
No, not because there was too much of emergency, because the long sessions were...
I think that was part of it. That was part of it.
Yes, yes.
Emergency legislation's part of it. A big piece of it was transparency.
Right.
And, and that's what we want, transparency, but we also want efficient government.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I was hoping, when we saw what came out of the, out of the thing, we would address both the transparency and the efficiency. Only thing that we've addressed here is efficiency, and we did it by giving up transparency.
That, we, and, and I would have to agree with, I forget who said it, but, we, we hopefully elect transparency. And if we don't elect transparency, we will elect transparency again until we get the right, we're a small community. I mean, every day we're getting more transparent. There's like eight hundred Huber Heights Facebook pages. We discuss the issues all the time. We're out in the public. Uh, everybody who, I think there are more people involved in what's going on in city government today than there ever has been. I don't wanna drag the meeting out. Uh, my question really is, what would you put in there? And then that way, 'cause it's my understanding that council can change any decision that the Charter Review has changed, or has any decision that they, or recommendation that they have, council can, can change or add, or... So, I would say, instead of going and campaigning against, uh, whatever we've recommended or whatever, maybe campaign against what changes that you would have put in there. Or, are you saying, 'cause I guess I'm confused, are you saying you wouldn't change anything? You would leave it the same?
Absolutely. Raw, absolutely I would change things. Absolutely. I have always talked about how bad it looks for the council. The first meeting I was in here, everything was done by emergency legislation. I talked to Ms. Caleb's about that. And she goes, "Well, it's the way the charter is. If we have all these, uh, little items that shouldn't need to," and that made good sense to me. Okay? So, yes, most of the things that come before the council don't need three readings.
Right.
Right? But certain items need three i, three readings. So, the, the challenge to the commission was to figure out language in here that differentiated between what needs three readings and what doesn't need three readings and get it in right here. Now, going to two readings will certainly make you more efficient, and it still offers some protection, 'cause at least you have two readings. So, if both of them said two readings, that's certainly better than one reading and two reading. But it still has the inefficiency for a lot of the items, uh, that don't need to be emergency, don't need to be claimed to be emergency to be passed immediately. All right? So somehow we need to get a copier contract, so it doesn't have, so that it can go into effect immediately without having to be emergency. That doesn't, this doesn't even say that. Even if you, but have you, resolutions are not emergency? Did I...
Resolutions aren't effective immediately under the recommendations. That's, that's in a separate section.
Okay. So, so, so there you go. All right? So, your seven hundred thousand dollar aquatic center goes into effect immediately after one, one reading, and the public can't complain?
If council chooses that, to only allow one reading. They could go more.
Yeah, they could.
I think the other thing that's really been overlooked is, is Mr. Shaw's assertion, based on his survey, that, you know, a majority of communities operate in the way that's being proposed. This isn't like we're going out in a totally different direction than the norm. And I don't know, Mr. Montgomery, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do you, do, you know, how do other communities that you've dealt with, if you have any input, handle this issue of, you know, one reading when that's an accepted norm, you know, in a lot of municipalities?
Yeah. I mean, in my experience, both on the public and private sector side, I mean, it varies from community to community. I mean, and each one's left to sort of govern themselves to some degree, but I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Shaw said. I mean, from, uh, at least the communities that I've practiced in, again, both either on the public or private sector side, most of them do have a, a shortened, um, legislative and administrative process from which they work. Um, at the end of the day, I think, um, some of the comments that have said, "Here, uh, hold true in those communities as well." I mean, at the end of the day, it's sort of up to those that are on the dais to govern what actions, uh, are taken, whether additional readings take place for a matter that's warranted or something gets continued somewhere along the way for additional input, or a public hearing remains open. Um, but again, at the end of the day, I mean, each community, at least those that practice home rule, you know, are subject somewhat to their own policing and their own governance, so...
Yes. Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in full disclosure, when I was at, uh, ordinance, not ordinance, Charter Review, um, my position, which I think is the most prudent, is two readings for both. What a surprise that I think I like my own, right? My point is that what I've looked at throughout this time, 'cause I'm one of the old council, as it were, um, and what I have advocated for many years now is time for the residents to be involved. And that's where, for me, the emergency clause was less concerning than the number of readings, 'cause that builds in time for the public to become informed, for others to engage the council members off the dais, knowing that there are those instances, the standard copier contract. Where I think today is a lot different than it was in two thousand and nine, when I got appointed, is that the other mechanisms that are in place now address that. For example, we now serve on a full council work session, a committee of the whole. It allows all of us to participate. It gives any council member then the ability with full authority to sit there and say, "My colleagues, I think this needs to go to a second reading for this reason. We need to have this time." And that's at work session level. Without making any direct assertions, the fact that the committees in the past were for council members, not a majority, that were assigned to that, and so things could come through a committee, and council members may not attend because it's not their committee that they're assigned to, and next thing you know, something ends up on the agenda that you didn't know 'cause you didn't attend. Yeah, you could have, but you didn't, 'cause it's not your assignment. And then you're like, "Now I've gotta raise it while we're on the actual meeting." And there may be a recommendation from the four that say, "Pass this, one and done, and go forward." We have a different format... We have a different format now for that. I'll reserve comments on, you know, twelve thirty and all of that and how to make those things better for another day. But full council participation at the discussion level before it gets to the actual business meeting of the public sessions. Second is, we now meet, in the public eye, even if there's only ten out here, and thank you all for being here, especially the one that I don't recognize. It's always nice to see a new face. And the media seems to be following us a lot more. Thanks, Will. But part of it is that I know, 'cause I've had comments from residents that have said, "Look, I don't come to the meetings because I work until whatever." Or, "I have kids," or occasionally "I have sports," like baseball practices. Throwing you out there. Um, but they watch it on the video archive. Tony, please help me remember. In oh nine, we didn't have a video archive for anything but the actual regular sessions.
That's correct.
Now we have a video archive for our meetings. There are people out there now, I know a couple of them are watching, or they'll watch it on Saturday when they get it. Why is that important? Because the ability for the public to be involved from the first time it comes to discussion is more now than it ever has been. Yep, I'll admit it. The proliferation of social media has also increased that. There are now debates that rage all the time out. Some are crazy, some are constructive, most are in between. But the video record is there, and I've seen that, in all fairness, most, with the fact that there's a certain informal organization from a certain neighborhood that made sure that their folks, the Carriage Trails folks, did a great job. This is positive. I was impressed with the fact that the Carriage Trails residents made sure to say, "Hey, we've got the video. Come take a look, consider the issues." Those that could attend did. Those that didn't were still very well informed and very well involved. And that's impressive, and that's something that we've got now in two thousand and sixteen that we didn't have in two thousand and nine when I came onto this council. To the mayor's point, that I think, as long as we don't, I'll call it, go back to the dark ages where suddenly all our committees are held back there with no record, and I just don't see us going back there without a lot of pushback from the residents beginning to end. That we've got. If we do as proposed, which, like I said, I had a different idea, but I'm okay supporting that. The one thing I would highlight for down the road is that the other way that the residents have a opportunity to... Oh, I was just seeing if you were paying attention to me or not. Um, the opportunity that we have to address that, though, is to, down the road, change the requirements that are set by charter regarding referendums. 'Cause that's the public's way, by charter, to then tell us, "Hey, we think you all screwed up and you did it too quickly." And then they go out and get the number of signatures. The problem that we've got right now is re- referendums take the same number of signatures as everything else, and a resolution that passes like that, the timeline is very short. I think that's something that needs to be talked about. I brought that up at Charter Review. It's not here because that's in Article twelve. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your point on the timing of it and the aquatic center and your concerns. And I was one who had concerns about the fact that everything seemed to be an emergency and everything seemed to be one and done. The way that that can be addressed is more to the ability of the legislators who say, as a matter of policy, this is what we will allow and this is what we will not allow. 'Cause anything you put in here, Matt's question, something you challenged but have yet to give a answer on, I looked it up. The meeting that you complained about, 'cause my first thought was, "Let's do twenty-five thousand, our, our standard." Problem is, that resolution had a not-to- exceed twenty-five thousand dollar exception on it. So it wouldn't have protected it from that either. If you go down to something like five thousand, then you've essentially eliminated anything but the most menial of, of contracts that are doing it. Most of the copier contracts I looked up as well are somewhere between five and seven thousand. So I've run probably long, and I apologize for that, but no surprise, I'm sure. My thought is that we do this on this piece, but that we make sure that the council members speak to this by saying, "One and dones, unless they are absolutely justified, don't happen." And let elected officials raise that. And then know that the public is more informed and more active now than I think they have been in a long time. I can't say ever, 'cause I've not been here that long. But I think that we have other protections in place to address your concerns that don't require keeping this at three and three. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say that some of the things that you say do offer a lot of the protection and a lot of the insight, but that doesn't mean that those items will go on in perpetuity. Uh, you have elect other people that have different values in here, and you might go back to the, the old committee system, and you might do it in the back room. 'Cause there's certainly some times where I think these meetings right here, and I've said this previously, would be a lot better around a table where we could get down on numbers and look and say, "Hey, I'm looking at this sheet, I'm looking at this number," and we don't have to look like authorities up here, all right? 'Cause I think that work sessions are an opportunity for us to learn. And if we were around the table with papers and homeworks and notes, that we could be less on guard about saying things that, that may make us look like we don't know everything about a subject, okay? 'Cause the work sessions are, uh, like in a, and that's why I keep saying, "I'd love to see tables out here where we could sit around and still be on video and have those discussions." Uh, but my point being is that a lot of the things that you say could, that, uh, we do today may go away tomorrow, depending on, on, on some of the votes and, and stuff of council members. There's nothing says we wouldn't go back to, to smaller committees and, and doing them mostly like they're in fact, you know, uh, there's some items, uh, uh, that we see here that it would be nice to be able to just have a short committee meeting and, and go through them and to get recommendations for. Kind of like your, your, uh, consent agenda. How did that get put together, all right? That might be something that's not quite as open as what we have here. But, uh, uh, I guess the, the point being here is, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Webb.
Um, we, uh, Tony Jayden, we've been having meetings for the last couple months.
Yeah, might as well come up to them, like...
Tony Webb, eighty-eight oh one, Classic Court. Um, as a member of the Charter Review Commission, we've been having meetings for the last two, two and a half months. And every single person on council has been, well, three of them are on the commission, but every, all the rest of them have come to the meetings. If this was something that you felt that strongly about and had ideas that we could take into consideration, you should have made them clear to us. You should have come to a meeting, or you should have given Tony some information, the ideas that you had. But for us to go through and now you come back, and I'm not saying I disagree with what you're saying. I would like to think about it more. If, if it would have been brought to me earlier, I would have had time to think about it and discussed it. And as a committee, we discussed it. But for you to now bring this up and say, basically say that we didn't do a very good job on it, I don't, personally, I don't appreciate that. Because we all have been working extremely hard on this, and we all take it very seriously.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Although I, I know that I have stated my position on this numerous times from the dais here. Mr. Shaw?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, Mr. Jeffries, did you have a, I seen your hand up earlier. I, I didn't know if you still had something to say.
Just a quick statement, so. Jim Jeffries, twenty-six fifty-five, Sunset Maple. Congratulations on the baseball team again, by the way. On, uh, the concept of the roundtables. Sure TJ Chalmers would welcome you guys on up there like they did our group, and we wanted to have those meetings around the roundtables. So if you ever want to look at that, I'm in. So I think, to me, sitting back, you know, you guys talked about involvement, participation. Tyler nailed what I was going to say. You're more accessible than ever and growing at speeds. With the new systems that are coming in, you know, being available to the public on top of the town halls, on top of the work session meetings that people have talked about, the accessibility is out there. You are elected officials. We do expect you to govern. I mean, at a point, we don't all agree. I mean, some of us will disagree on things. Tyler and I have talked at length on items. At the end of the day, you are elected officials, elected by us, the citizens, to get a job done. There's eight coun- there are eight council members and a mayor. That is the checks and balances system to hold each other accountable. So if it is getting off the rails, that's, to me, that's what I view that dais as, is to hold each other in place. So that was all I had. You know, it weaves me to a statement I hear all the time at work. After all is said and done, more is often said than done. And we really seem like that's where we're at, so, thanks.
Anyway, um, the Charter Commission obviously has not looked over the whole charter. So if we went to the ballot, uh, with what we have now, it isn't a complete, uh, a complete review of the charter. So the question is, are we satisfied with what we've got done so far that would warrant going to the ballot twice? Or should we, uh...
Well, it's a process thing. Uh, the city attorneys indicated to us that, um, generally these items are treated as separate items when they're dealing with, uh, subjects that are not related. There's some that we can group together, but you would have a multitude of various charter amendments. They aren't approved in one item en masse. So the point in bringing these here would be to prioritize, um, some of the items, if council chose, to proceed with them, uh, for moving forward, recognizing that this would be a multi-stage process that I, you wouldn't typically go to the ballot with, you know, twenty changes, uh, at once with all those amendments, because that would be maybe a little bit overwhelming to the average voter to be informed and for the, the city to do its education, uh, to the public on just what these amendments might be and what the impact would be, um, of those changes. So, um, we wouldn't be looking to propose all these changes for November, even to the stage that we're at now. It would be considering some of them that would be, um, of priority, recognizing the fact that already the city is going to have the chicken issue on the ballot and the water softening issue on the ballot, um, as well.
You're, you're saying that if they come back with, uh, changes in four or five different sections, we have to have four or five different amendments on the, on the ballot? Or if somebody had, uh, tried to do this by referendum or that, that they would have to have four separate?
This is the, the guidance that we've been given as far as the process now. We've been told, um, that, and Jerry McDonald's been involved with some of this as well. Um, like, for instance, the issues that relate together, like five oh four, five oh six, and five oh seven, that all have pieces that if you make a change in one, it's going to cause a change in a subsequent section, and they're all within the same article of the charter, then those could be grouped together potentially. Um, but we would have to seek approval of, uh, Secretary of State and the Board of Elections as part of that approval process.
So to put the clarifying statement in there about the form of government would need its own referendum?
As we understand it now, yes.
Okay. I, I think we need to reattach that and see, get a written opinion on that and what drives that, 'cause it makes no sense. Uh, and, but, uh...
Alan's sat here, and he's been through several of these in other communities.
Okay, well, that, that's fine. It's just I'd like to, it would be good to, to see written and...
But what I preface when we first started discussing this is not all these changes are created equal. So there are some that would have the ability to make a much more significant impact than others. So you would want to weigh that potentially in the decision to what to proceed with as well.
Mr. Otto?
Me personally, I, e- even if we could do it, I don't think I would want them all done as one issue anyway, with so many different subject matters. You know, if you had a person out there to say, you know, "Oh, well, yeah, I think this is really good, but, you know, I, these three I really like, these couple I hate them, so I'm voting no against all of them." I, I don't think I'd like that anyway. I'd like them to be proposed as individual issues to begin with. And I think that was the plan initially, was we had decided we, if we were lucky, we might get three or four, maybe even half a dozen by the November ballot. And then if we had any more, they'd have to go on the, you know, primaries.
You look at some of the other communities that recently had charter changes where they, uh, you know, affected council salaries and they had term limits. Those were done as separate charter amendments. They weren't done as one item grouped together.
In the last general, uh, City of Van Dea had twelve separate charter amendments on their, uh, on their ballot. And they, they were detailed like four point six, section four point seven. So sometimes even within the sections, each one. City of Dayton does the same thing, uh, the way that they're structured. A lot of things require a charter amendment for a lot of changes, and that everything is a separate section. It's very common.
I'll, I'll stay corrected then. It just doesn't, doesn't, initially.
So we felt like, we felt we have an opportunity here with, uh, a ballot coming up. Um, it's also going to be one that's going to be widely, uh, engaged with the citizenry. So it presents a better opportunity than, say, if you would go in May with these items. And you also, in May, there's the issue of would we have a significant larger portion of the cost of the election to, to pay as a result of having those on that ballot as well.
Mr. Shaw?
Um, I, I guess a question of moving forward here. Um, now that, I like to say we started the discussion piece, and there's going to be several more discussion items to this. Where does this go about getting this in front of council as a first reading and moving forward? What is the proper protocol and steps about moving that forward so we can try to hit some sort of timeline?
Well, with Alan being out of town, um, I asked him how we were going to be able to proceed in a short time, and he had indicated that, uh, Jerry McDonald would be available and has a great deal of experience in drafting these types of charter amendments. I've had some initial conversations with Jerry. However, I think he's having a, another surgery, um, I think a week, next week. So, um, his services are going to be available this week, and then I think he's going to be unavailable again. And, uh, so as far as the process moving forward, if council were to agree on something they would want to see on the ballot, then we would be working with legal to, uh, draft this into legislative form um, so that it could be brought before you for consideration to the ballot. Now, because of the timeframe that we find ourselves at and a rapidly closing deadline, uh, for the Board of Elections, um, the somewhat ironic thing would be potentially, well, not potentially, you would almost have to, uh, adopt this as an emergency measure to put on the ballot, to change the issue of emergency legislation and waiting legislation. So, um, that, that would just be out of necessity because without the emergency clause, the, the item would not be effective for thirty days, which even if it was approved on Monday, would put us past the deadline for the Board of Elections for November.
And, and I, and that was kind of leading to my question is, I, I think all of these items are important. And I, and I like to say I, I speak for the entire committee when I say these were voted unanimously, 'cause we all as a group thought that they were very important. But at the same point in time, I, I think this drives a lot of community education forward to move on this. I know I'm not heartbroken if this doesn't get to a ballot until the primary of next year, because that just gives more... because that just gives more ample opportunity for the community to be well-informed. Um, uh, I couldn't see myself voting for emergency legislation, to end emergency legislation. But, um, that's kind of where I'm at at this point. I mean, I, I, I knew that we were up against a time rope. Um, I, I knew that, the committee knew that as well going into it. Um, and I know we have a lot more discussion, you know, with the charter review to, to move forward. Um, but I, I mean, at this point in time, I mean, we're in no real rush at this point. Let's, let's take it slow and do it the right way.
Mr. Shaw?
Since I'm a member of old council, I don't mind putting this on for an expedited review and getting this in front of the voters in November so that, um, we can get input on some of these items in particular. And respectfully, Mr. Mayor, you indicated that at least on this piece, you would be, um, campaigning against. And I've respected your decisions to do that when you have. And I think that's what, um, this, um, one or two and, and that piece. Let's get it to the voters and let the voters tell us. Because at that point, they told us, "Yeah, we're okay with a, um, one reading resolution." We've heard the mayor's concerns. We've heard the arguments from council members. And this is what we think we want to do in terms of impacting our government overall. So I think, the discussion's been phenomenal in terms of the point, counterpoint. I've been impressed with some of the ideas come up. I say, "Let's get it to the, these items, get, let's get them to the, to the voters so that they can give us their feedback without it being advisory." It's not advisory hours being discussed.
Well, no, I understand, I remember from what you said, I don't know if it's realistically possible that we can do it with Alan out and, and having the legislation done. I don't know if it's realistically possible that we can get these to the, to the voters at this point in time with the time constraint.
But he's, he's committed other resources to us, sadly.
It's council's wish, we, we think we can make it, Alan.
I think our council here can address that. And in terms of Alan, Alan will be back by next work session because he's already made it clear that he'll be back for next work session. So as Jerry, just looking at the logistics and counting my lawyer's heads of it all, when Alan is back is when Jerry is out. So I don't think that there's a concern and, and David is very versed and able to do it. And...
The issue would be too, if you wanted one or two readings. I mean, that, that, that's what affects the timeframe because if you want to have two readings, then it would have to be by my day. So that compresses the timeframe. If you only wanted to have one reading and then adopt it, you know, on the twenty-fifth, then that would obviously give more time for the details to be worked out.
Interesting. Ms. Burge?
Um, and to, just to clear something up here, uh, on the comment that was made, there, there is no rush, um, in deciding what issues are going on the ballot. We went into this understanding that we were only going to get so far and we stopped at a point where we thought it was feasible to stop. Uh, and I think it would be demoralizing to the Charter Review Commission if we didn't put something on the ballot, uh, in November. Um, I, I think we all agree from the commission that, uh, that we're in solid shape uh, and we've thoroughly vetted these items and that they should go forward. And because, uh, it is going to allow a, a first bite at our charter on the ballot, which will be a good thing to familiarize the community with what's going to come in the future. And the fact that it's going to cost less to put it on the November ballot than it will to put it on the May ballot, um, that we thought that was another good reason to go forward. So I, I hope that we can move forward. And if it takes emergency to make sure we meet our, our deadline, then we all understand that as we've been moving along. And that's why we cut it off where we did.
And I guess to Mr. Styline's point about putting it to the voters, if, uh, obviously having two readings to both gives at least a little protection, uh, like there. I certainly would like to see more protections put in, uh, in, in some way. But to put it to the voters, if it is a poor piece of legislation, I think we should take the opportunity to make it better. And quite frankly, as written today, is, in this proposal, I think it's a, a poor proposal to go to one reading on resolutions and, and get rid of even the, uh, emergency designation automatically. So I would highly encourage council to put on a better piece of legislation if they would like to go to the voter on that particular section.
Well, to be clear, if, if we were to proceed with 504, it would be 504, 506, and 507 are all interlinked. So they, they would be a combination package.
Correct. Council? Mr. Shaw?
And I may, and, and now knowing that we have the resources available to move forward, um, I may be, may be mistaken, but I, I believe we have a good consensus to move forward here. If we can get it done, if we can get something on the ballot in November, um, I, I think that's exactly why the majority of the residents put me in the seat. Um, and that's why I joined the Charter Review Committee and, and have a great group of individuals having great discussion. Um, I can't find any more times to say great. Um, but I, I really think that we need to, you know, really move on this.
And so you're proposing that, uh, we send it to legal to come back as proposed by the commission?
That is correct. And, and I believe education will be the major key. And I believe we have a, a great group of elected officials, uh, that can make that happen. Town halls, I'm sure, like, can be set up, uh, you know, with the city manager, uh, making sure that the community is well-informed. Um, and, uh, I think this can happen.
Well, I intend for the community to be well-informed as well. And it probably would be a totally different message. Okay, so we have more sections to discuss then. Yeah, I started with the one thinking that, I, I was unaware that each section was going to be its own ballot initiative. And so I hit the one that was the most controversial or the one that most people would be interested in.
Well, to frame the continuation of the conversation, perhaps it would be best to start with, um, does council desire to have more than that one item on there? And if so, which ones, rather than debating each one, you know, individually? Because some of the others are a little bit more benign. And ultimately, the Charter Review Commission is going to issue a written report with all their recommendations, um, in a final format at the end of the process. Um, so there'd be another opportunity for council to take, you know, a point on those.
So we'd look at Section 201 and say, "Do we want to send that to legal to get..." So the point is, look at the recommendations, Section 201. Is that an issue that we would like to send to legal to have drafted up as a ballot initiative, to be read on Monday, read on the next work session, and then sent, uh, to the ballot? Ms. Burge?
Actually, it was the recommendation of count, of the commission that we go forward with all of these as a whole.
Correct. So the question is, do we want to talk about...
I think the recommendation the commission was to report out all of their changes that had been made in final form to council at this time.
Right, but we had intended that they would go, all of them would go on the ballot.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't have that same understanding, but, you know...
Okay. So now as a council, we should decide if we want all these sections as, as ballot measures. Mr. Shaw?
As a member of that committee and as a member of this council, um, I would like to see every one of these changes move forward, um, as proposed.
Ms. Webb?
I concur.
And Mr. Styline, you shaking your head?
I concur as well.
Mr. Otto? And that's interesting because there's a lot of things in here I'd like to discuss. But I guess we'll have that discussion at a later time and move on to the next agenda item.
Now, Mr. Mayor, just respectfully, and I know Mr. Truman brought this up. Seeing these, these items come out of the committee, um, I do want to let you know that this committee does meet on Wednesdays. Um, and Wednesday evenings, and we are welcome to your input and/or by email or through the clerk, um, to any proposals moving forward.
Except tomorrow.
Except tomorrow, yes, sorry.
And we were meeting at eight o'clock, which is like in your timeframe. But now we're at six o'clock.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. Am I in the right one? No. Uh, Digital Gateway Sign, Thomas Clough Park.
All right. Um, the National Park Service was holding a teleconference about, uh, they held one about a week and a half ago to discuss this sign and any other options with other park districts around the state to see what's being used and, uh, get further input. Um, unfortunately, my point of contact up at ODNR, uh, has been on vacation and won't be back till tomorrow. So, uh, I guess this moves to the next work session. And hopefully by then I will have some definitive information on, on what they think is acceptable.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to public participation process.
I don't, I, I don't remember what this is about. No, what this is, is a, um, uh, more of a discussion topic. Uh, it also has a course of action attached to it as well. Uh, if you recall, the, uh, list of priorities per se that was circulated, one of the main things that was brought up out of that, in fact, the top three, all had to do with, um, more engagement, uh, more citizen input. And we've even heard a lot of discussion about that particular item tonight regarding some of the processes. And, uh, in, in looking at it and, and kind of reflecting on some of that, uh, similar dealings that we've had recently, uh, with, uh, our community forums, with whether it be the tax initiative, whether it be energy aggregation, et cetera, that citizen-centered engagement type of activity, uh, really was, was, was welcomed. And I won't go through and read the memo and hopefully you have some time to do that. But it just basically makes the point of this. Uh, generally, in the standard traditional approach of these governmental legal meetings, uh, people are absent or they're angry is what it, what it boils down to. Uh, granted, we have better attendance than we have maybe in times past, but still then, uh, we don't have a lot of attendance for the purpose of participation. We talk about the word input, whereas we've got an agenda, we've made some decisions, we're starting a course of action, and at that time, we're taking input. But it seems as if a little bit more effective method for true citizen-centered engagement was to start at the participation level, to guide and direct and get that input to see what decisions and what items and what, uh, what avenues and methods that we should be looking at. And basically what that does is that takes us out to the community rather than asking the community to come into us. That's both physically, metaphorically, and everything up above. Um, that's the severely abridged version of this. But in essence, it, it starts with a couple of things. One would be basically establishing a public participation policy through resolution. What's the purpose and need behind that? We can all agree that, hey, that's what we want to do. But what it does is it legitimizes it. It basically makes it a form of local law that we say, "Hey, we have a public participation policy." There's a draft in there for something like that for discussion and work on purposes. Uh, the other section is, is as we all have individually and as individual council members, uh, some of you have had ward meetings, we've also had this, and we've made mention of town hall meetings, et cetera. But again, it's not to go out to, to the community with an agenda, it's to go to the community to get the agenda, if that ma- makes sense. Uh, that's kind of the premise and the purpose behind that. Um, factored around, uh, maybe a, a program called Open Vision Uber Heights, uh, keeping open vision, open-minded, uh, conforming from me to we to us thinking, uh, where we come up with, you know, wh- what my idea might be, uh, how we can engage it and how it affects us. So me to us type of thinking, uh, really taking that in, in a reverse order because so many times the legal requirements of the regular business of the council, uh, you know, historically, every community is faced with the same thing. Who wants to go to a council meeting? And their only chance is their five minutes at the podium, uh, for their input. If it's considered, if it's not, but generally a vote's taken right after that. So, uh, that really isn't true participation in the discussion to bring the item to what it is that we're talking about. So listening to that, factoring that and seeing some of the concerns, uh, also some of the input, um, some of the desires of the community and quite frankly, some of the innovative trends that's going on in local government. Um, I, I've attended a couple of conferences. I've also networked with, um, you know, several other, um, groups. Uh, I have attended, um, something called the Innovation Lab through the Alliance for Innovation, Transforming Local Government. And some of these ideas and methodologies are coming through where, what can we do to take engagement to the next level? And it all seems to be around citizen-centered engagement. Um, we also talk about some of the advanced technologies and tools that we have afforded to us now. We touched on some of them tonight, some of the accessibility with, um, uh, the, um, the video streaming, uh, all that, taking advantage of that and what we can do to use that to our advantage. And, um, really trying to transform, uh, a lot of our desires and, um, or not desires, that are, um, are directions and all of our activities to a more citizen-centered focus. Not that we're not, but, um, we can always do better. So hearing that, that seemed to be a, a top, top issue of, of all of, uh, the participants in that kind of informal priority list. And, um, this was a step that I, that I come up with to, uh, maybe start that process and get us to where we're formalizing it and, um, you know, leading ourselves into the community with not just the formal meetings of council and ward meetings, not to replace that, but actually do it to where, uh, we are not inhibited by the process from reaching out either at employee level, a board member level, an elected official level, et cetera. That it's a, uh, a, a governing policy throughout the ranks for that public participation in anything and everything that we do. It also factors in on transparency and all the other things. There's a whole lot of other details in the background memo that's been posted out there for, um, I think a couple of months now. Uh, and, um, uh, that's, that's basically what it is, uh, what it is designed to do. Um, a couple of other things we did is we, we developed the blog. Saw your comment. Um, and as we developed it, I just want to see what we're going to do with it and then we'll start launching, going live. You know, the goal is, and of course with the, um, the liberation issue of online stuff and council, well, that's our website. We can certainly, uh, you know, archive that and, and all those things. So, uh, the idea would be that as we take information, we can get input and discussion that we can capture and utilize for a particular topic. So if, if a citizen wants to talk about, "Hey, our street signs should be yellow instead of blue," you know, just something like that, we could, you know, realistically see, well, is this, does this have traction? Is this something that's, you know, citizen-centered? And we find out that maybe we haven't thought about it. But then, I think Mr. Truman talked about groups and, uh, little subcommittees and communities within the city are forming and talking about things. Um, and, uh, it can develop into an item that this body might want to take action on. And that's something that, you know, would be citizen-centered and led. Also, in, in one, there's a, um, there's a side effect that, that I think can occur and would occur in some communities that do things such as neighborhood priorities, um, community priorities, ward priorities, district priorities, et cetera. Um, and we've seen some evidence of that to where it can affect a disagreement and segregation of the community. And by taking and looking at things and factors from that me to we to us thinking, you know, we've talked about the water pressure issue, well, the north versus south, you know, all those things, where i- if we go out and, uh, start and develop those ideas from the understanding of participation from the community can get better understanding, uh, better input and, um, and better knowledge for, for you all to make decisions. So, um, that's the, uh, the quick pitch on that. Um, it's something that we can hold on to, think about again. Uh, if, uh, if you all are interested in, in establishing a, um, a process and a procedure and legitimize it by all means, um, you know, annotate and, and tear up the resolution, add things to it. and we can employ it and we can start to develop a practice and start promoting. Just the idea of the concept of that can engage a different level of the community and encourage people not to come out, but to be open to having us in. There was even, it's funny because even tonight, we talked about, hey, have your meeting at TJ Chump's. Ideas like that, understanding that we like to record our meetings, we like to have minutes, and there's some legal process and structure, but some of the informal meetings, that we can still go out and do that and bring that stuff back to the formal process. As a body, would be really beneficial. Not that we already don't have enough meetings, but still then, it's important to hear, and I know you all are listening to and hearing from the community, but I think that taking that next step and that element of, at that input level and transition it to the participation level at the beginning of the discussion rather than interim or at the end of the discussion, I think can really add some benefit and make a difference.
Ms. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw, I've had quite a bit of time to read this, kind of understand it, kind of get my thoughts around it. And I'm going to be very simple in this, is I think this current council has done leaps and bounds of reaching out to the community. I know every one of us sitting up here currently right now has at least had one ward meeting so far this year, and some of us are going on to our second round, and I think that's great. Each one of us has been available at many community events this year, available on social media, by email, phone, the whole nine yards. I know from me personally, I am empowered, I would love to empower you with whatever you need to go out and make Huber Heights more open and accessible to public participation. I think that our community wants to be involved more, even from a volunteer standpoint, not just with baseball and community cleanups and things like that. And you've heard it today from the chamber, people are at to the point right now, they want to help, they just want to be asked. Some people don't even know where they can help or how they can help or how they can get involved. I think this is a step in that direction to really open up the floodgates, to really see what our city is really made out of. You know, we have, you know, six different wards. We have a great group of business and residential aspects here that I think can be tied together. I think, you know, an Open Vision Huber Heights and moving forward with a public participation process really will lock that in and scream to the mission statement that this city has. And empowering not only our staff, but the elected officials as well, that we really do want to hear what the public has to say and moving things along from the me, we, to us. I like that. It's going to take me a bit to get that down, I'm going to put a few quarters on there, but I like that. So, as far as I'm concerned, you know, what do you need from me to empower you to move forward? I think this is a great thing to, you know, to start that conversation.
Alexei, I did read through this, and I appreciate everything that you were speaking to, and I think they're all very good ideas moving forward. But what I'd like to do before that is to simply work on the mechanisms that we currently have in place to help further those along and use them a little bit more than we do. I know Ms. Smith has reached out about the website, you know, Mr. Shaw's mentioned our Twitter account, you know, we got a Facebook page. I think we need to get a little more active with those and just kind of stay a little more up to date and a little more current. I know that the main page for the city, I'm sure it hasn't changed this year. You know, the pictures, and that's six months plus. So, you know, I think if we can get a little more active on what we have now, and then when we move forward, I think what you're on to is absolutely spot on. And yes, more public meetings without any types of agenda, just wide open for public input. You know, what do you guys want to talk about, where are you at? I think it's very good ideas, absolutely.
Ms. Burge?
I kind of disagree a little bit with what you say, what you said, Glenn, about the, um, getting more going on all these other accounts. I think part of the problem that we're facing right now is we have so many different venues out there that people go to, whether it's Twitter accounts, individual blogs. I mean, there's just a ton of different places. And if we had one city blog where we discussed the public business, you would get a real cross-section of the community because we don't have the advantage of seeing what you have on some of yours, what Richard has on some of his. I mean, after you dig in, I mean, there's limited access on some of those areas. So, the discussions are fragmented. But we need to have a single source where people can go and see the trail of messages and see the different comments and to better understand those sides of the issue. You know, I think a lot of your individual accounts probably have a lot of like-minded people on it, a majority of like-minded people. So, you're missing out on another side of the issue. And which means that we had, we need more emphasis on getting the city blog up and running and generating comments and discussions so that we can all learn from them.
This is 2016, you can't go into just one avenue. I mean, should we just throw up a public pinboard again and let that work for us? No, we're in a different time now, there's so many different avenues, so many different approaches. And they don't really require a ton of time, honestly. You know, it's, you know, how long does it take? We all, I think, jump on, well, I've been very ghost-like for about a month while I was in my pool project. But as far as Facebook goes, you know, five minutes a day and you've got yourself updated and you can dig more time into it if you want, but as a city, I mean-
But who knows where they are? Who knows where they are? Your individual people that are on your site know where your Facebook pages are, they know what they are.
They're totally public and you have to go find them.
You have to go find them, that's my point. If they know that they're on the Huber Heights website, they don't have to search around. No, they don't. They go on the Huber Heights website and there should be a link there that'll take you right to it. That's my point.
It's still just a website, man, it's just another website with a different name and a different thing.
I understand, but you don't have to search out there for it. I mean, there's, how many different, like you said, there's a ton of websites out there.
There's Google, and there's Bing, and there's-
No, no, I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about Facebook pages and Twitter and stuff. You're missing my point.
You're going to press what people say is easy, still.
No, you're missing my point, that you have them all these different places and it's impossible for the community to know where all those different places are.
But Mary likes Facebook, and Joe likes Twitter, and Steve just wants to get on the blog. And that's just the way it is today. Everybody has a different preference on what, how they like to go.
You can have gateways to those off of the Huber Heights website.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's what I'm proposing, is that you have a gateway.
But you still have all those things, though.
Well, that's fine that you have all those things. But you guys have individual ones that are not open, what I'm saying. And so, we need to bring it to a single doorway in there, you want to call it that.
Or a link, or a main page, HHOH.org?
Yeah.
Absolutely, we can stall with it.
Yeah.
Agreed, absolutely.
Yeah, well, that's the point I was trying to make, thank you.
And that's, yeah, oh, absolutely, I agree completely, yeah.
Well, I don't know. I, a lot of people know I run my own blog and my own thing and I'm perfectly willing to do a mayor's blog from HHOH.org, but I'm not sure that I need a link from HHOI.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't see your personal.
To Huber Residents.org, I don't think that that's appropriate.
Oh, I agree, I agree with that, yeah.
You know, I mean, I could have-
Was that you?
No, no.
Did you want the city to link all of our personal Facebook pages?
No, I'm, no, if you want to continue, no, if you want to continue to run that, that's fine. I'm just saying, the city business should really be discussed on the city website, or at a gateway off of the city website.
And I've been advocating for white board for discussions, for council and that for, I don't know, is it years yet? Or definitely months? Ms. Ken, did you have a?
This is kind of my alley. So, has the city ever talked about finding a communication person to work on some of this? I mean, do you have someone that's dedicated to communication stuff? Because it just seems that we, you know, you have a Facebook and you've got some really great things going on. Perhaps I'd be more than happy to sit down with that person from an outsider's perspective. You know, I mean, I think I know quite a bit about Huber Heights after being here for six years. I'd be more than happy, you know.
Yeah, I think this is going in a completely different direction than what the petition was. What I was talking about was more of a, was more of a mentality rather than a tool.
Right, your community engagement is just a definitely me, we, us, and I totally get that. It's right in line with a lot of the things with asset-based community building and those kinds of things that I'm all over. So, but I also agree with what many of the council members are saying and that we have a very fragmented external communication from the city. And so, there might be some ways to build both of them simultaneously. And I'd be more than happy to give you some direction if that is wanted.
Mr. Shaw? The reason I brought that up is because of your information and your package here on Open Vision Huber Heights blog. So, I assume that that was kind of where that was going. I probably made an incorrect assumption, but-
No, that is certainly one of the methods. The purpose was, is because of that fragmentation, as a city, it's difficult to utilize mass social media to properly engage, monitor, archive, and all the regulations that are required. The tool of the blog on the website is a clearinghouse per se. Certainly taking, for instance, somebody would have a comment on Facebook. We generally do not engage and start a conversation because of the expectation of the general Facebook user, we're going to lose, we're going to look like failures because as a city, we're not going to keep up. Their expecting answer, it might be a day or two, by that time, lord knows where that conversation is gone. So, it's difficult to moderate on mass social media. However, it's got a very valuable use and tool for reaching out to make messaging, to reach out, to make announcements, to reach out, to guide people to certain things. So, that was the intent and purpose. With the whole purpose, goal, and mindset fundamentally of not saying, hey, community, we have something to say. It's, hey, community, what do you have to say to us? So, that's the mentality of the purpose of this, is to reach out for input back, not to push out, if that makes sense. That was the mentality difference. I agree with everything everybody said, with utilizing our social media, utilizing our website, updating it, keeping it up to date and pushing out information about what we are doing. Absolutely correct. That can't be fresh and up to date enough. I mean, we're talking people will check stuff every thirty seconds. We can't keep it up to date enough, but that's stuff that we're already doing and stuff we're talking about. What I'm talking about is what's our next move? Let's find out what that is. That's the process that I'm looking for, if that makes sense.
I guess my question when I read this is that how do you feel hindered today as far as conducting town halls or reaching out and creating that block? Or utilizing the impact group the way I think the impact group is supposed to be utilized? How are you hindered today that we need to address that?
I'm not. What it is, is again, it's a mentality thing to where everybody agrees this is kind of the methodology that we all want to agree to. And although I could come up with a million ways that I think that the city should communicate, I represent the administrative side of the city. You all set policy, and it's an idea to bring those two together to set up a common philosophy and process. You mentioned yourself, your blog. You all, as political and elected officials, have that need and the desire to, you know, to have the political side of things and, you know, campaign and posture and all that. That's, and that's necessary for your position and to reach out and see how the community represents your constituents. However, I also want to make sure that as elected officials for the city, we have a common agreement, you know, stepping forward that, yes, we are committed to, you know, citizen-centered engagement. Not to say that we aren't, just to kind of reaffirm it and to create some new avenues and to hear about some new ideas for, you know, like you mentioned, some asset-based stuff and all those things, to reach out and say, okay, well, hey, how can, what is our next move? You know, I heard the gentleman earlier saying, it's our job, or, sorry, it's your job to govern. I agree. However, it's, what also I'm hearing from the community is it isn't a local government's job to decide everything for the community as well. The community has ideas as to what they feel is priority. We do have to govern those ideas. We do have to legitimize that and everything. It's getting to that idea is the part that I'm talking about, if that makes sense.
Well, I know we've run town halls over the last two, three years. How does this help your attendance in those town halls?
I think it helps the attendance by the fact that we're not going in there and saying, hey, community, we want to talk about this. It is, hey, community, be more, in a non-traditional public meeting, all the cities here, they're going to, you know, say this. Some people may not trust, there's people that, you know, may not feel comfortable in a public forum or an actual formal feeling meeting. Where it might be, you know, to Mr. Shaw's example, and again, this is not to say this stuff is not being done because it is being done. It's just, we would like to formalize it and show it as a matter of our standard practice and process. Or not, I mean, it's just a suggestion based on input that I've received and heard. Nonetheless, like at the festival, that's, you know, getting out of focusing and taking and gathering. It could be at the festival, you know, you end up talking to a group of ten or fifteen people and jot some ideas and kind of follow a form of the me to we to us and engaging some ideas and bringing that idea back. And then you, as an elected official, would come back to the rest of the body and say, hey, you know what? Had ten or twelve people talking to me about this, I think this is something that's got some traction. And then we take that idea and expand it and get more feedback, develop it community-wide, and then see if there's an action out of it or a change or something that needs to be governed out of it from the body. So, does it change a whole lot? No, it's just a stated commitment. And it kind of reaffirms some practices and refreshes things. So, like I said, it was based on some input that was received from some of you all and from some of the community. So, I just wanted to take a stab at following up with those priorities that were identified.
Okay, so I personally don't know that anything that, I think that you're on track in the fact that you have received feedback from council members that we should be putting booths up in the chamber events like we did, but city booths, and should be participating in such. I'm not really sure that the reasons we haven't been isn't because we haven't had this piece of legislation. I think that, that, like that. So, I guess part of my thing is, I don't see anything in the A through K that really means too much. So, only section four where we have a designated public participant administrator is really only the only meet in this particular piece of legislation. So, are we going to give an existing staff member additional duties? Are we planning on hiring somebody new and having a budget for it?
No, we've got resources, we've mentioned them already. We've got, you know, people that have already started some engagement on staff. We also have the impact group that are flowing some ideas and have some reassignments, some personnel there as well. No, and again, this isn't designed to be a, trying to take your formal engineer hat off for a second. This is designed to just be more of an illustration of a mindset, more like a mission, like a philosophy, more than a process type of thing. So, it didn't mean it to be like a regimented step-by-step, hey, this is what we're going to do. It's just to kind of define a philosophy. Is the resolution necessary? Absolutely not. What does it do? It's unique in the fact that it takes a step. Some of the more modern innovative communities have taken a step to say, hey, we're going to make a- have taken a step to say, hey, we're going to make a law that says that we have a public participation policy. How, how other many communities do that? What does it mean? It doesn't mean anything, to your point, it doesn't have a whole lot of meat to it. If we never do it or do anything in it, okay, but if we don't do anything in it, at least we've said we've committed to it, and somebody might be able to call us on and say, well, hey, hang on a minute, we talked about, this is the way that we're going to move, we're going to, we're going to operate moving forward, was, you know, was that true or not? So, that's, that's basically what, what it's for. So not, not necessarily to establish a thing where we're going to have action items and informal positions and descriptions on things and everything, again, it's more of a, of a philosophy and a mindset.
I guess the other concern that I had when I first read it, and then I saw a couple comments that kind of said that I wasn't the only one that, that, that felt this way, is it kind of looks like we're trying to put in a means for keeping some of the comments that we've gotten from the public at the public forum, trying to inhibit some of those people from making the comments, so that-
I don't know where that would come from, because it's quite the opposite, there's no change to formal meetings, this, this is trying to get out and get additional comments, good, bad, or indifferent. I'd, I'd like to see or have somebody point out to me where it would say that, because it doesn't say anything about that. Or at least intended-
The whole idea, the implication that sometimes we have non-informed people speaking and addressing council, and it's not so much in the legislation, but maybe a little bit near background information, kind of, kind of, looks like we just want really smart people to come and talk to us.
It's not what, what it reads, no, seriously.
So, yes. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Starling.
Appreciate the discussion, and just making my question out loud versus, if we don't have a mandatory timeline, and I expect it that we don't, then would it be prudent for us to then try to digest this a little more, and then come back and discuss it at next work session, or provide feedback to you? Because I'll, I'll be very clear on this, I am very impressed with what you've brought to us. What I'm trying to sort through my mind is, what is philosophy, which I love, and then what is actually procedure, which I love in a different way? So I appreciate this, and it's, I just wonder with the time that we've discussed this, is it now a good idea for us to take time to digest before we go forward further? Because I appreciate what you've said, I also appreciate the questions that the mayor has brought up. And getting more information, so I, I like what you've done here, Rob.
Yep, it wasn't intended to be a project, a decision, I opened up with, this is more of a discussion point. This is just a result of putting together what I thought a next step is, based on my self-thought obligation to react to the priorities that you all have identified to me.
All right, and just rereading the problem statement, I, I think that people can look at that and see what, what impression they get with that. But anyway, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, there's Ms. Blankenship, and she's not here. We did have a, a request by the city manager to go into executive session for the discussion of- For the sale or purchase of real estate.
There's nothing on the economic development stuff to be discussed. Okay, I'm just checking to be sure. So it'd be a motion to go into executive session for purchase or sale of real estate property.
Council entrusted? Mr. Shaw?
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of sale or purchase of real estate.
Ms. Burge seconds it, and call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Does this have to be unanimous?
No. No.
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge.
All right, so we're headed to executive session at ten fifty-seven P.M., and, no action. All right, then, we've come out of the executive session, it's ten fifty P.M. We have a couple items to discuss here after coming out. Essentially, we're going to have an agenda item for Monday to talk about hiring a, an attorney outside of our current attorney who has a conflict of interest with the matter before council. A council discussion? Everybody's good with having that on the agenda for Monday?
Yep.
All right, and the second item is to have a standard MOU for the city manager to proceed with negotiating the sale of city property.
Letter of intent?
Letter of intent, okay, letter of intent for negotiating the sale of city property. And we'll see that on Monday as well. Counsel? All right, next thing on the agenda is action items. I did have one thing on there that I, I did want you to address, was the YMCA parking recreation, date for coming back to council was July sixth, do you want to establish a new date for that action item?
I, I do have, it assembled all the way to a shirt design with a new logo and stuff, I just didn't get it on the agenda, so it slipped my mind to get it on. So I will get everything in there and ready for the next work session, everything else that was focused on getting it together, not getting it in the agenda, so I, I apologize.
And we will change the action item date to the next council meeting, or work session. And with that, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, and Ms. Burge is always good with the second. All right, and with that, we, we will call the roll for some reason.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Starline?
Absolutely.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
All right, and we are adjourned, ten fifty-two P.M. Here, here's an official note-